A reminder to all who attend public meetings on the first Wednesday of the month. This meeting is designated for our work sessions. This is where most of our projects and initiatives are discussed prior to decision and votes. I say most because there are some circumstances where we will carry forward discussions to the subsequent Wednesdays, and that would be the third of the month, so that's the voting meeting. So sometimes there are issues that we will need to vote on during our work session meetings, and that's a matter of business and keeping the business moving forward so that we're not postponing decisions and holding anything up. So most often, the first Wednesdays of the month are our work sessions where we'll really be talking about the initiatives that will be ongoing for this current year of 2024, or carryovers from 2023. This meeting is attended for discussion, question and answer on topics that have been prepared by administration, placed on the agenda, and public notice of the agenda posted. And that is posted the Monday prior to the work session meeting. We post not only to the Borough website, but to social media pages and the television channels on Comcast and Verizon. The council members receive ongoing information every Friday so that we can review and prepare for our subsequent and upcoming discussions. Having this information provides us time for additional clarifying discussions with administration, interested parties, constituents, or one-on-one discussions with other council members. As a reminder, meeting minutes from both work session and vote meetings from the prior month are available after the third Wednesday voting meeting, and you will find copies of these meeting minutes posted on our websites. Meetings are recorded and directly available for viewing on both Comcast 965 and Verizon Channel 20 the Thursday following the meeting at 7:00 PM, and the recordings of the meetings are also available on our Borough website. Just as a matter of announcement, on January 30th Senator Hughes presented Conshohocken Authority a check in the amount of $1.4 million. These funds were awarded as part of the H-2O Pennsylvania Grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development. The project submitted by the Conshohocken Authority will support a more efficient and reliable system for the many residents in Conshohocken, West Conshohocken, Plymouth, and White Marsh who depend on our critical infrastructure. It's important that we continue to invest in our local infrastructure and to ensure our neighborhoods and communities can function as needed. Infrastructure is foundational, and when we invest in infrastructure, we build strong communities where our people want to live and contribute. This investment is just another indicator of the growth and bigger future for Conshohocken. I also want to call out today being the start of our own Conchi Club rounding. That's an exciting thing for us. I want to send out big thanks to all those staff and individuals who brought this project to opening day today. We're getting lots of feedback and look forward to this being very successful amenity for the Borough. The RIT has 20 stops currently that have been established from the inception of this project, and these were determined by the input of the citizens and small business owners via surveys and conversations. That's not to say that depending on the success of this, that we can't scale, add, or enhance the program in the future. We'll continue to monitor the feedback from our residents, and as a reminder, we have a mechanism for citizen concerns and feedback on the Borough website where these inputs get forwarded to council and we review the input for our future decision makings. Also, there is an app that you can put on your phone that's called Busware App, and that will give you a vision of where the bus is in the routes in the Borough. So very exciting to have that started today, and I don't know if anybody saw it today, but it was driving in its loop. Okay, with that, we'll move on to council business. So tonight, we have a few topics on our agenda. The first is we will be conducting an interview for a vacancy on the zoning hearing board. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dennis Fay, and he is looking for the position of zoning hearing board alternate. Mr. Fay, if you don't mind coming up to the podium. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Excellent. So, Mr. Fay, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and what interests you about being on the zoning hearing?
Sure. I am a, well, I've been a resident of Conshohocken for the last seven years. My wife, who's here with me, brought me here. She's been here much longer than that. And everywhere I've lived, I've always wanted to be more than just a resident. I've been involved in, you know, local community stuff at various places I've lived around the country during my life. I'm originally from Upper Darby and then lived in Westchester for another 15 years of my life. And when I moved to Conshohocken, I just felt there's so much this community has, and I just want to be more a part of it. And I wanted to see how I can give and use my skills in what I do for a living. I am the head of procurement for a large trucking and warehousing company called the NFI Industries. My team, we are in charge of procuring about a billion dollars' worth of goods and services a year. I negotiate large contracts as part of that role. And I also personally have been involved in building a couple of houses of my own, and I understand those kind of mechanics and the legal side of the business as well as the building side of the business. And here I am, giving myself up to volunteer to be part of that.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Fay? And I'll clarify, this is for the alternate zoning hearing board position. So this is an important position to us in the event that any of our zoning board members are not available. This position allows them to continue to function and be able to vote.
Have you looked at any of the zoning recommendations for the Borough?
I have been tracking it for years since I've been here, absolutely. Following things about the overlays, everything that we've been doing in terms of trying to decide what to do with the Riverfront and so on and so forth. Yes, I've been following that, so.
I'll jump in. So I was previously a member of the zoning hearing board before I took this position.
I know that, yes. You represent my ward.
Oh, yeah. I won't ask if you voted for me, though. So my first question is more of a statement. Having that experience, I know that it takes a lot of time reading and researching.
Correct.
Just want to make sure you're prepared for that, you know, more for you than just interviewing it.
Yeah, understood. So that's kind of what I was getting at when I said what I do for a living. You know, I have two 50-page contracts sitting right now on my desk that I have to go through at work.
Okay.
So do I love it? No. Do I understand the importance of actually reading every piece of it? Yes, I do.
Okay. My other question for you is what's your experience with reading construction drawings?
Actually, pretty decent. You know, I've never been in that business 100%, but as I said, I've actually personally contracted building houses on my own. And so I, you know, I've gone through the various levels of, you know, blueprints, both for the structure as well for the grading and, you know, everything else that needs to be done. So I feel comfortable with that.
What's your experience or what's your comment about sitting and judgment? I mean, the position isn't creating code, it's interpreting and applying code, right?
Sure.
So how do you feel about that aspect of it?
I guess I feel as if with anything else, it's law, right? So it's a matter of judging, you know, the balance between, you know, the common good, what the petitioner is seeking, as well as, you know, what the overall meaning behind the original code was, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Anyone else have any questions?
Sure. Have you actually attended any of the zoning hearing board meetings for this Borough?
Not for this Borough. No, I have not.
As Alan said, it's more, you're not really making, you're deciding whether somebody gets a variance or, how do you weigh that if somebody wants a variance in doing something in a neighborhood that maybe the other neighbors don't want that?
Yeah, well, I think, and that's kind of what I was saying to Alan here, is that in general, you know, I think it's a balance, right? You have to kind of figure out and tread away everybody's, you know, what the property owners surrounding the petitioner, you know, how it affects them versus what are the rights of the property owner. You know, it's, I don't know if I can answer and just say that I could tell you exactly all I would say, but it would be based on the situation. And then for me, overall, with my opening statement, I mean, what's more important to me is this community and what it's like for people like me to live here, and how I can make it a better place, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have any questions for us?
Not yet.
All right.
And no, I'll wait to hear from you, and then I'm sure I will, so.
Well, thank you for coming out and volunteering to be on one of our boards and commissions. These are important roles for the community, and having people like you who want to really get involved in the community is greatly appreciated. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys inviting me.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we will be having a public hearing on the adoption of our Main Street overlay district ordinance. Presenting this evening will be Judy Stern-Goldstein from Gilmore and Associates. Just as a little information prior to getting started, the intent of the overlay district is to implement recommendations from the 2018 Comprehensive Plan for the Revitalization and Development of the Borough's Main Street. The draft ordinance is also taking into account the feedback received by our local residents and business owners during public workshops of the task force. With that, I will turn the microphone over to Ms. Stern.
Just take it, please.
Judith Stern-Goldstein.
You solemnly swear or affirm a testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
President Sokolowski, if I could just briefly, I have some boring stuff I have to put into the record.
Excuse me.
For the record, this is the scheduled date and time for a hearing pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code on the following ordinance, an ordinance of the Borough of Conshohocken, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Conshohocken, Chapter 27 zoning, by adding a new Part 23 Fayette Street Corridor Overlay District, amending the zoning map for the Borough of Conshohocken to include the Fayette Street Corridor Overlay District, repealing prior inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances containing a severability clause and setting an effective date. Before we let Judy get started, I have nine Borough exhibits. Exhibit B1 is the ordinance under consideration, including the zoning map under consideration. Exhibit B2 is the attested version of the ordinance sent to the Montgomery County Law Library with my cover letter dated January 9th, 2024, and the timestamp from the Law Library dated January 12th, 2024. Exhibit B3 is the proof of publication. The ordinance was advertised in the Times Herald, in Times Herald Digital on January 10th, 2024, and January 17th, 2024. Exhibit B4 are notice letters sent to the property owners owning properties within the overlay dated January 4th, 2024, and January 5th, 2024, including a comprehensive list of all addresses to which notices were sent, which included both the subject property within the overlay and the address on record with the Board of Assessment, as well as copies of the mailing labels used. Exhibit B5 is the review letter of the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated September 13th, 2023. Exhibit B6 is the report of the Borough of Conshohocken Planning Commission from their meeting held October 12th, 2023. Exhibit B7 is another review letter of the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated November 6th, 2023. Exhibit B8 is a memorandum dated October 4th, 2023, from Gilmore and Associates, Inc., forwarding the draft ordinance to Borough Council following its creation by the Main Street Task Force, CCing the Main Street Task Force members. And exhibit B9 are three renderings prepared by Gilmore and Associates, which I believe Judy will review with Borough Council. After Judy presents, the public will have an opportunity to make comments on the record, and Borough Council will, of course, have the ability to ask questions to Ms. Goldstein or any of us. When the public comes up, we'll ask you to put your name and address on the record, and we'll take you one at a time, but we'll start with Judy first, and then we'll go from there. So Judy, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mike. So as was stated at the beginning of this introduction by Mrs. Sokolowski, the Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2018, and that Comprehensive Plan had some specific action items regarding the Fayette Street Corridor and adaptive reuse and reutilization of properties within the Borough, specifically updating ordinances to support infill development and redevelopment efforts, revising local codes to encourage appropriate and flexible design options, updating ordinances to encourage dwelling units in combination with businesses as mixed use development, providing incentives for the adaptive reuse of vacant, abandoned, or underutilized commercial properties, improving the permitting process to help facilitate the development of new stores, restaurants, et cetera, updating parking policies to ensure requirements are conducive to business and residents, and updating ordinances to encourage a mix of land uses, densities, and site plans that support alternative modes of transportation. All of these were action items in the Comprehensive Plan that were consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan that was developed with a rather large steering committee and a lot of effort from Borough staff, Borough residents, and council also. Subsequent to the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, the Borough entertained what should happen with the Fayette Street Corridor, basically your Main Street Corridor. Task force was envisioned and compiled, brought together. First, there was a public workshop back in May of 2022. We met in the room here at Borough Hall. It was quite an active meeting, and we received a lot of valuable input. After that, the task force was brought together and met throughout 2023. The task force was comprised of Borough residents, two council members, and representative of your EAC, who was also on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force or Steering Committee, other residents and business owners, and I believe a special effort was made, it was apparent to me, that the task force represented the cross-section of the Borough and people within the corridor. For instance, we had a resident in the upper avenues. We had businessmen that dealt with properties throughout the corridor. It was representative, and they did roll up their sleeves and they worked hard. There were a lot of meetings, some of which were contentious at times, and I believe that some of that discussion became heated, but it was resolved with a very good compromise that I think all of the task members felt comfortable with and proud of at the culmination of it. The culmination of that task force effort was the draft ordinance that you see tonight. We took it to the Planning Commission in the fall of last year, 2023. It was revised earlier this year after discussion with council, reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission twice, once for each of its versions, and we're here for the hearing tonight. I'm going to walk through the overlay briefly so that everyone can have a feel for it. The most important thing is that this is an overlay. It's not a change to the existing zoning, another task force member entered the room. It's not a change to your existing zoning district. So if you own a property in the corridor that would have this overlay, you have every right to use that property as it is zoned today, or you could opt in to the overlay. And the benefits of opting into the overlay would be you could have the multi-use buildings and take advantage of the ordinance regulations that permit and encourage the multi-use buildings. But there's no reason that you need to. If you have a dwelling, for instance, in the upper avenues, you can remain there peacefully as you are, or a storefront that exists in the middle avenues. Everything is permitted as it is today. This is adding additional rights on, it's not taking rights away. So I'm going to just walk through the overlay, if that's okay with the group. The first and foremost part is the Declaration of Legislative Intent, and I know I've been reading, but I'm going to read that one paragraph to you, though. Declaration of Legislative Intent, which is the first section, in the expansion of the Declaration of Legislative Intent contained in Part 1, the intent of the Fayette Street Corridor Overlay District is to allow property owners in the overlay district the option of developing slash redeveloping properties according to the underlying zoning or according to the FCO zoning, and to establish development standards which achieve the following. One, encourage economic development and redevelopment of underutilized properties. Two, assist in unifying Fayette Street as an attractive, vibrant, mixed-use corridor. Three, promote pedestrian orientation of streets and buildings. And four, use scale, I'm sorry, use scale, building orientation and landscaping to establish community identity. The next portion of the overlay district ordinance describes the district boundaries. Essentially, the overlay district is divided into three zones. Zone 1 is the lower portion, I would talk lower, upward is a hill, as you all know. The lower portion, that extends from Elm Street to Fourth Avenue. Zone 2 is the middle avenues, which would be 4th to 9th, and Zone 3 are the upper avenues, which would be 9th through to 12th Avenue. The next part of the ordinance is a table of permitted uses in the FCO district, and it is a chart that identifies uses permitted in Zones 1, 2, and 3. As we got to the upper avenues, a lot of discussion centered around and focused on what uses may not be as appropriate in the upper avenues because of the impact on the residential character and on the residents themselves. If you notice, the second part of that use chart has additional use-specific requirements. For instance, the first one, 2A, all non-residential uses permitted in Zone 3 shall cease operation by 10:00 PM. That's so that you don't have bars or restaurants with late-night, bringing recycling materials out to the bins at midnight or 2:00 AM. Special care was taken with that, and there was much discussion about that. Residential uses shall not be located on the street or ground level and shall be above a non-residential use. That was to promote the mixed-use portion of this, and also to make sure that we have essentially feet on the street. We're looking at this, if someone's going to opt in to the overlay, that it be economically viable and create that vibrant streetscape for the avenues. And residential uses in Zone 1, which are the lower avenues, would be limited to multifamily dwellings, which is where you have the larger buildings. We then go on to list regulations for daycare facilities. The reason why that is listed here is that the regulations for daycare facilities in your existing ordinance are only permitted by conditional use. All the uses in the overlay district would be permitted by rights, so we needed to identify them as part of this. The next part is the area and dimensional requirements. The task force took great care, and there was much discussion about the area and dimensional requirements. And I must say that the minimum lot areas essentially match your underlying zoning. The building heights do also. There was a lot of discussion about building height and what building height looks like in the massing, and we ended up, so Zone 1 was 40 feet, that was for this district. Zone 2, 45 feet or four stories. That's basically what you have right now in that area. And Zone 3, 35 feet or three stories, which again is basically what you have in the underlying Next are civic or public plaza requirements. That is if there is a non-residential use that is occupying at least 15,000 square feet of space or greater, there's a requirement for civic or public plaza incorporated into the site plan. General requirements, blank walls facing Fayette Street are prohibited. Street-facing buildings should exhibit varying roof heights to break up the horizontal planes so you don't have just big blocks. Buildings and major pedestrian entrances shall be oriented toward the primary street, and that is Fayette, so that is also feet on the street, having that vibrant activity on the street. We include signage regulations also. Parking standards, the non-residential uses are required to provide a minimum of three parking spaces for every 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, excluding parking uses. And residential uses have a minimum of one space per dwelling unit for efficiency in one-bedroom dwelling units and 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit for units with two or more bedrooms. Were feasible, ingress and egress from parking shall be from side streets or alley, not from Fayette Street, and that's to keep from having all the driveways breaking into the street. Parking areas shall provide pedestrian walkways and connections. We're very concerned with the pedestrian walkability of the Borough in general, and you've done great strides in the Borough with additional trails and sidewalks, and this is recognizing that and mirroring it. And the creation of new sidewalk curb cuts should be avoided, again, to have that continuity of sidewalk and pedestrian access along the corridor. Finally, there were three new definitions that were added to your ordinance that were necessary for the creation of this overlay. Mixed use, we define what mixed use is. Basically, a building designed to encourage a diversity of compatible land uses, which include a mixture of two or more of the following uses, residential, office, retail, recreational, and other uses, as noted in the chapter. They're the categories, they're not the specific uses, they're the categories. All your uses are broken into major categories. And the last two were farmer's market and grocer's market. There was a lot of talk about what could possibly happen or potentially happen in the upper avenues and the larger vacant space, and there was a great hue and cry amongst the task force to have something akin to a farmer's market or grocer's market. We ended up looking at a lot of examples. We did a little, a lot of me pulling up on my iPad of what different buildings and facilities look like. And the regulations that came forth in the ordinance, that 13,000 square feet, for instance, mirrored the Simply Fresh, the McCaffrey's Simply Fresh in Doylestown, which happens to be 13,000 square feet. It's attractive, and it's a grocer's market. What we were hearing was not a large chain store, one of the big supermarkets, but not a convenience store, something in between. So the area and dimensional requirements that were set forth for this would mirror something that would, we know is economically feasible in other areas, so it's not something that, like, it's not impossible to have a small grocer that's 13,000 square feet. We did that fact-finding with the task force. And then the zoning map is part of this also. Was it possible to pull the zoning map up on the screen? The zoning map shows the underlying districts. The BC district is in a reddish rust color, and the RO district is in an orange golden color. And then there are patterns overlay to show the three divisions, Zone 1, 2, and 3 of this. And since it's not up, I will just describe, it'll come up eventually. The overlay corridor is the first property deep along Fayette Street. So for instance, if there is a second property that fronts the next street, that wouldn't be included. Only properties fronting Fayette Street were included in the overlay, and that, again, was through much discussion with the task force. So that is the basic presentation. We were asked to look at what buildings could look like in the upper avenues. This is the zoning map, thank you page. So as you look, the bottom area, on this it's coming up more pinky, but the pinky area with the diagonal crosshatch is Zone 1, essentially from Elm up to Fourth. Zone 2 is the dots, the polka dots on top of the pink and the golden area, the middle chunk, and that is from Fourth to Ninth Streets. And then from Ninth to 12th is the orange rust color with a diagonal stripe in the opposite direction of Zone 1. That is Zone 3. And the reason why it doesn't encompass the entire depth of the underlying zoning ordinance is that since it's an overlay relating to Fayette Street, you must have a property parcel that fronts on Fayette, and they've been defined as the existing parcels. So if somebody were to combine- So if somebody were to combine parcels, you don't get to come into, into the overlay unless you're defined on this map as being a parcel.
Just for the record, quickly.
So if I have a frontal on Fayette Street and I purchase the parcel behind me, that parcel behind me can become part of the overlay?
No. If, if the parcel's not identified, excuse me, as part of the overlay in the overlay map, then you could not add it. So you can't reach out of the district to pull other parcels in.
So if I want to put a building up and I need to meet the parking requirement, thinking I would purchase the building behind me that would not satisfy the overlay?
If you were proposing shared parking, there's a provision in the ordinance for shared parking, but you could not combine that as part of your lot area. Now, there are parts of this, the, the depth of lots along Fayette do go back to the, to the parallel street behind it, but not all do. And this was not to have people gobble up properties outside of the district to bring them in, but it was offering the ability for people, just as they can today, to combine parcels. There's nothing in your ordinance today that precludes people from combining parcels to get developable area. So if somebody was going to combine parcels that are in the overlay, they could combine them.
Judy, they can combine them just with other parcels that are in the overlay? Is that what you?
Well, they can combine them with anything they want. It's the, the free market. But to use the overlay, they would need to be in the overlay.
And that would be sort of going through, go through the steps, through zoning, subdivision, that sort of thing, reverse subdivision, I guess, would be the term?
Yeah, through the subdivision land development property, they would have a lot-line combination plan is the most common way of doing it.
Right, okay.
For the record, Ed, if I could break in, the map that we're looking at is part of Exhibit B1, so it's clear for the record.
And then, I guess this would be the time to bring up the three renderings that we were asked to prepare. And the caveat is that we did these rather quickly, and I did not have an architect on staff, we're landscape architects and planners. So these are not buildings that have been designed in the utmost of design. They're really looking at the massing and potential. So the one you see here is 922 Fayette, and that would be the massing of the maximum that somebody could get on there, and...
And is that Zone three?
That is Zone three. All three of the renderings that we did were in Zone three. That was an area that I believe people needed, were asked, we were asked to help with some visualization.
Judy, just so we're clear, these would all qualify today for the overlay?
Yes. Well, today, if it's adopted.
If it were adopted, yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah. So the stats on this one, just briefly, this would be 55, what's shown on the plan, 5,500 square feet of retail slash office space, six two-bedroom apartments, 26 parking spaces, six would be surface and 20 would be below grade, and all of that would fit on the property. And we threw some brick on it. We represented the, the windows. It's not, you know, this doesn't have window trim and accessories on it. It's pretty basic, but you could see the massing.
26 parking spaces?
That, that used, as I defined it here, would be 26 parking spaces, yes. And then the second one. Second one, thank you. That is where the laundromat used to be? Is that the?
No, they've struggled.
Oh, laundry, I'm sorry, is, sorry, is.
Let's, if the, because we have a co-reporter here, let's try not to yell out from the audience.
Laundry mat is, I was corrected. And that, that's represented as five 1,000-square-foot retail spaces, five two-bedroom apartments, two one-bedroom, or one-bedroom apartments, and that would be 25 parking spaces. And that's shown just in the building massing and very basic. I wanted to start tinkering a lot, but I am also not an architect, and I didn't want to get too detailed because I didn't want to represent an actual building. Whoever owns the property would, would spend the time on the actual building. And then the third one briefly. The third one represents the market grocery, and that would be 13,000 square feet. And I cannot read that from here. I don't have that paper in front of me for some reason. It was 13,000 square feet grocery market, 12 two-bedroom apartments, 16 one-bedroom apartments, 73 parking spaces. How many were surface and how many? Thank you, 48 surface and 25 below grade. And that would all fit on that property. And in, in reality, I think that if somebody was going to do the, the grocery market or the farmer's market, it would probably be a two-story space for occupying that market, and it would be one floor above it. But we showed this as a maximum, knowing that we were asked to look at how, how big something could be. So it's just a visual for you.
And for the record, those, all three images were part of Exhibit B9.
So I, let's put the map back up then, and I'm here for any questions council may have, and then I will be here if you want me to respond to anything from residents. It's at your pleasure.
So the next part of this hearing is the opportunity for council to ask questions that they've been compiling from residents, as well as questions amongst ourselves. With that, I will ask Kathleen, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, Judy, I just want to ask about the off-street parking again, so I understand that it can be located other than the property being developed, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the overlay district.
It doesn't have to be, but it has to be shared parking.
Okay.
And it can't be farther away than 200 feet from the use, so it can't get too far.
But I guess in reality, you could have shared parking on the east side of Fayette, 200 feet to west side of Fayette. I'm just throwing that out there. Is that even possible?
Let me understand, so if somebody has a parcel on the east side of Fayette, and they want shared parking on the west? Well, the width of Fayette's going to take up like 56 to 80 feet to start with.
Right.
So it, it starts eating into it.
Unless it's a vacant lot to begin with, you, you can't do it, basically.
Well, it's a vacant or something that somebody is not using half of their lot, but it's going to be pretty hard to go across the street with it, because then you're going to get pretty, pretty far away pretty quickly.
Okay. So the off-site has to be shared, and it could be outside of the overlay. Doesn't that kind of make the overlay a little bigger than it started out, if you look at it that way?
Well, it would be parking, and since it's shared, the assumption is that it's parking already, and you'd be sharing parking that is underutilized.
Okay, so we're going back to Tina's scenario. We're not going to buy a house and knock it down, so we're going to make a parking lot.
I doubt that. There are many less expensive ways to make a parking lot, but I can't tell you that, that somebody won't do that, because there are people that will do things that will shock you.
Amazing, yes, amazing.
The one thing is, though, you as council members do have some control of that situation, because in order to use the shared parking, that is permitted by conditional use only. So that would require the applicant to submit the plans and package for conditional use, go to the planning commission, have a review from Montgomery County Planning Commission, and then come to council. And as part of a conditional use, your solicitor will tell you that you can impose conditions that would be appropriate for that use.
So it's possible, but you're saying not really likely?
It, well, I'm thinking that shared parking along the corridor is very likely, but shared parking going farther, I don't think is that likely, but it's possible. And again, you have some control over that, because it does require a conditional use.
I just want to clarify that. We have Zone one, parking garages and lots are allowed, but Zone two and Zone three, they are not allowed. Can you clarify a little bit more?
Oh, that, that would be a, a separate parking lot or garage.
Like a parcel, like if somebody knocked the house down, they couldn't put a parking garage up, because it's not permitted in Zone two and three.
Correct. It, the, the parking that you would have in Zone two and three would be the parking for the uses that you're proposing. It would not be a separate use unto itself. Thank you for clarifying.
Neet, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the electrical signs that people put out, like the one we have here at the borough. You said 12 feet. I think nine feet would be more appropriate. There is a sign outside at the church, Sixth and Fayette, and theirs is nine feet. I believe the one that we put at the lodge is nine feet. And I think the one at the firehouse is nine feet. I think if you go any higher than that, it's going to start looking crappy.
So you're talking maximum height, not area?
Mm-hmm. Nine feet is really, it's a nice size, and it's not overwhelming. I think if you go to 12, it's really hot.
Well, and, and the issue is, though, it's, it's the height, it's not the sign itself isn't 12 feet high, or 12 feet from the ground.
Yeah, from the ground. The one, the one at the church is only nine, and it's perfect. It's, it's not overwhelming. The one out here, I know, we're getting every place, I believe. People can't read it, but it is just for us. But the other ones are all that same size. And I'm thinking if you add another three feet to that, you're looking at a very high sign.
The, the issue along Fayette is not the same as it would be on a street that is primarily vehicular-centered. The issue on Fayette is that you need to deal with people walking also. So if somebody, if a sign is close to a building, you'd need to be able to get it high enough that people can walk under it also.
People would not be walking under it, and so on the property in front of the building, it would be off the pavement.
It could, the, the way the signs work, though, they could be, if the building is tucked back, and we're, we're all about the nooks and crannies along Fayette Streets, you have some really nice little spaces, like in front of Feen and a couple others, where the buildings are set back and have little areas. You could have signs that are set back from the street, because you don't want the signs right in the sidewalk area in front of the building. The buildings are going to be close to the street.
We're, we're trying to hang on to some of the ordinance that it, and I think if you start putting signs in, in every building, it's, it's going to take that away.
Okay, thank you. Ralph?
Judy, what, I know, obviously, the farmer's market was one of the targets. Was there any thought to, like, what other businesses could functionally afford that kind of storefrontage on other properties aside from that? You know, obviously, like, Feen comes to mind, small coffee shops, small business, locally owned.
Yes.
Is that really realistic, given the costs that are going to be associated with that kind of positioning to look for businesses like that, to kind of maintain that feel of, everybody wants it to be like, you know, Fayette Street down on the 100, 200 block, which is nice, and it's small businesses? Is that realistic in your interpretation, or no?
In working with the task force, I think it is realistic. I think that it's more likely to get a, a bunch of smaller businesses and services, experiential businesses are a big thing these days, so that it won't necessarily be just retail popping up. It could be service businesses, it could be things like yoga studios, things like that, places where people are going to have an experience. It could be coffee shops, bakeries, florists, all, all of those type things, too. But the task force was made up of a pretty good cross-section with business, business people, and they felt sure that the way to make it work would be to provide for that mix of opportunity and not just looking at the bigger, combining a bunch of lots together, but looking at the small pieces.
And, sorry, from a property value standpoint, for the residences, residents around that area, generally, when this, something like this is done, I'm sure we're not the first, obviously, but is that, what can they expect from a value on their properties relative to something like this being adopted to that area? Is there expectations there?
Something, something like this overlay being adopted affords more options for property owners, and more options for both residential and non-residential tends to increase the value of property. That's more development and redevelopment potential.
I know some of the concern that, that we've heard is about multiple, people buying multiple properties. Zone three, we were very careful about the impervious coverage. Can you talk a little bit about that, to kind of explain where our minds were with that, and how, how we kind of created an opportunity where, even if there's multiple combined, it's not covering as much as properties in the other two zones?
Yes, that, that is something that was done with a lot of care. The maximum impervious in Zone three, for instance, is 65%, but in Zones one and two, it's 85%. And I have to tell you, this task force made use of everything we had in the room. I wish we had saved the drawings on the whiteboard. They were good. But we tested things. We tested what, what would happen, looking at a building coming out to the maximum setbacks, and then would that have room for the parking on it? What, what type of impervious you can get? And 65% was realistic, but it is tight still, too. It's not, people will not be coming and paving over an entire parcel. It's much more green. And some of the parcels up in the upper avenues, there are a few that are maxed out beyond that already, so this is actually less than what exists on some of the parcels.
Adrian, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Alan, do you have any?
Yeah, could you talk about discussions you had in these meetings, or anything that's come into this proposed ordinance that you feel would promote walkability of the district?
The walkability is promoted by having the potential for some other non-residential uses and adaptive reuse up in the upper avenues to draw people from the lower avenues. I don't think we have a problem there. But draw them up, have a reason for people to walk up the hill, have a reason for people to come up to that area, and patronize your existing businesses and the potential future businesses up there. That's part of it. Also, the, the requirements that the users have to have a presence along Fayette Street, they need to be oriented toward Fayette. Parking is to the side and the rear. Parking cannot be in front of the buildings. You can't have more driveway cuts coming out into, into Fayette. You need to access for parking from side streets wherever feasible. So all of those promote walkability and encourage existing and future residents and, and patrons of the area to come up to the upper avenues.
Could you also explain why you're limiting driveway cuts or the addition of driveway cuts?
Because driveway cuts are the bane of existence for anyone who's walking. When, every time you come to a driveway cut, you're having the slope up, slope down, or a curb with a ramp, you're having more traffic to look out for. You can't just be walking along the sidewalk. You're stopping, and you're in traffic still while you're in a pedestrian safe zone, you have traffic crossing you perpendicular.
Yeah, Judy, I asked you this, I think, early November, about how does this interact with the RO District and the upper avenues? And basically, why did you decide to cut off, like, lop off a, a whole block of the RO and put that in Zone two as opposed to Zone three?
You mean, there's separation between Zone two and three?
Right.
Yeah, that was developed early on with the task force and also with the public meeting that we had in May of '22. That was the feel for the different areas, and we, we asked, you know, is it, like, we didn't want to have our preconceived notions come through, but we wanted to know, is there a feel lower and upper? Is there a, a lower-middle-upper? And it came out loud and clear through that meeting in May of '22 that it really did have three different feels. And then working with the task force, that, that was discussed at several meetings, actually, until we came to the, the, actually, I think we came around with the first suggestion. But that was where it, where it broke. And that was from the task force that had residents of the upper avenues in Zone three that And that was from the task force that had residents of the upper avenues in zone three that was part of the, part of the meeting also.
Right, so that portion of eight, between eighth and ninth, is the RO district. So in that district, you're going to be able to have buildings 45 feet tall in a residential district?
You can now.
You can now, okay.
Yeah, you can now. And that was something, we actually spent a lot of time looking out the window of the meeting room. And I'm looking, okay, so that building there, that's four stories high, but it's this district. So there was a discussion to make the entire, like, the upper avenues go that high, too. And that came around two or three times. And the voice of the representative that's a resident in the upper avenues came through loud and clear each time. Don't do that. But there was push both ways. And we did look at not taking rights away from, not making this more restrictive on height than the underlying.
Okay, so that doesn't change anything for that particular block?
As far as height, no.
As far as height, okay.
But other adaptive reuse and potential redevelopment is afforded to them.
And one more on the RO district. There is a historical overlay that, it has two parts to it. One is about the homes, the single-family detached. And as far as I can tell, there's only five of them left there that are still single-family homes. Everything else has been converted to some sort of mixed use already, or multifamily, one or the other. But there's also another part on that that, to the historical district, after you get through about the single family. And it says, "To preserve the character of the borough's existing residential neighborhoods," which the RO is one of them, "by ensuring these areas maintain established densities and development patterns." So has that been taken into consideration for the RO district?
It has been in general, yes. The RO district does permit some more dense residential. This would have, if you're taking advantage of the multi-use option within, in the overlay, you would have the residential density up above, and then you would have non-residential below.
But it could still
It's generally consistent with that statement, yes. And I use the term generally consistent, that's a planning term with the MPC.
I got that.
It wasn't meant to be global.
And that, the rendering that you showed, that was 1109 Fayette. That's the first of the two more properties that are in the borough. The third one's in White Marsh Township. If they wanted to combine both of those properties, 1109 and 1119, they could do that.
1109, I'm trying to think, I know 1109.
Was it this?
That's where we did the one, that's the
The farmer's market?
Yes. And 1119 is next to it.
Yes, and they're owned by the same people, but they're separate lots. So it's where the Chevrolet dealership was.
And if they're both in the overlay, they could be combined. And I believe, yes. And they could be combined to dig under your existing zoning also.
Correct.
Judy?
Yes.
A lot of the residents concerned about the historical aspects, which Kathleen mentioned. Could you go over some of the things that you're doing in order to keep it, have a look that's interesting, not a
Box.
Not a, not a box. And also, what's the process when somebody actually submits a design? How does that look? Where does it go through? And what's the process with that? That might be more of a question, is that, but you can go ahead.
If they're coming in, and if the, if they're coming in of the overlay, they would need to have a land development because it, land development, subdivision, land development kicks in if you have more than one non-residential use, or more than one residential unit. So anything by definition with the overlay carter would be coming in for land development. They would need to show their full site plans, go through that full process. And they would also need to show their architectural plans to demonstrate compliance with the parts of the ordinance that require the variations in the roof, the orientation toward Fayette Street, the percentage of windows, or windows facing Fayette, so that you don't have a blank wall, the public plaza component or gathering space, if they have more than 15,000 square feet of non-residential use. So all of those, they would need to demonstrate compliance with. So does anything that gets built, knocked down, rebuilt, go through a land development phase? And I guess that is to everyone.
I can answer that. Under this ordinance, yes, based on the nature of the uses.
So we have not changed anything about our land development process, or Correct.
Correct, there's no way to shortcut that through zoning. So it still has to go through the full-blown land development process. And Ralph, the only additional thing I'd add to what Judy said is if it's a, an old house, a historic house that's still being used as a historic house, it also needs a conditional use at the beginning before it can be torn down. So that's one, one additional step.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I skipped that part. So that's a built-in protection?
That's, that is, that's a protection that already exists today and still applies moving forward. And I think Ralph wanted to make sure, for example, that that was made clear. We can actually have the editor add a note within the codification, and they'll incorporate that section, and then no one will have any excuse for not knowing about that requirement.
Anyone else have any questions of Judy?
Okay, Judy, thank you for answering all those questions. I think at this point, I would ask that if there are any task force members that are in the audience that would like to comment on record about the work that was done or put into it, the podium is yours. I'll just call out who some of the task force members are, so everyone knows who represented the borough. We had Brian Magren, Lisa Rhodes, Julia Morales, Bill Zabanos, Bill McLaughlin, myself, and Stacy Elm were on the task force. And then our zoning officer, Allison Lee, our borough manager, Stephanie Checo, and then Judy and her associate were on the task force. So this is an opportunity for any task force members to speak about the work that was done, or any of the stuff we talked about today. They weren't shy in the meeting.
I thought Brian would run to the mic.
Just saying.
I'm Bill Zabanos. I've been, I'm now retired chiropractor in Conshohocken. I've been in Conshohocken for 41 years. I've owned two properties on Fayette Street. I think one's in two and one's in three, maybe they're both in three, I'm not sure. This whole intent was not to change what was already in place. The intent was to incentivize what we could do better in the upper avenues. That's what we were trying to do. Keeping the character of the town and hope that we could get some kind of coordination between the lower half and the upper half. There's a disconnect between four and eight, just because of what's there already. So we saw an opportunity between eight and 12. I think we spent a lot of time with it, there's still some questions. I understand there's some architectural issues that we can discuss. But again, that has to go through a process that we weren't part of. But I think, given the opportunity to the tenants, even the residents that live up there, they'll have more options to see what they might be able to do. And I think it's good for the community. You see what's happening in Ambler, you see what's happening in Phoenixville. We need to do more for our community here.
Dr. Bill, if you could please give an address for the record.
My address?
Your home address would be fine. Unless you don't want to give it, then you can give any of the properties you own, it's fine.
Yeah, 815 Fayette Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian, do you want to?
Sure. Brian Magren, 312 Fayette Street. So just so everyone has some context, I mean, similar to what Bill just said, it's a lot of trying to keep the character, but also kind of like tastefully modernize it. And I think what we see, and anybody that kind of walks Fayette Street sees, you know, there's some stuff that's like, this is good, we want more of this. You know, I think it's great to see just like the line outside of Scoops, of like, all the community kind of hanging out and doing things together, even though they're just waiting in line for ice cream. So, but there's also some properties where you're like, yeah, this is kind of a dud. You know, nobody's excited for this. So what we were trying to do was kind of bring together some stuff where we could have the opportunity to have businesses on the ground floor that would bring people out, you know, kind of bring some of that community sense together. But also, you know, if you have a business district where everything's dead, you know, at six o'clock, it's also like, those areas kind of become like dead zones a little bit. So that's where having the residential above it helps. And then one thing, I know there was a question about, you know, how they would look. We did, you know, in the rules or the overlay, there's language around, like, we don't want these to look like prisons from the year 3000, where it's just, you know, a big box with a bunch of metal and glass. So there's language in there around, you know, if you go above a certain height, there has to be, you know, it can't just be a flat roof. It has to be, you know, some architectural features that kind of mirror some of what's already there. So that's what we're trying to do, is not make things go in that just looked blatantly out of place, but kind of tastefully, you know, modernizing, and then keeping, being able to keep some of the best stuff. But also have flexibility within the rules so that if you do have a property owner that's, say, one of the, you know, one of those properties that may be a little more of an eyesore, they can still, economically, it works for someone else to come in and say, hey, we're going to be able to buy them out. We're going to be able to put something else in here. You know, there's still some capitalism where, like, people do need to be able to make a little bit of money for the risk that they're putting in. But also being able to make that viable for new properties that can go in that are going to have that mix of business, residential, kind of keeping that general character of what we're doing. So that's what we're aiming for. I live on 300 block of Fayette Street, so I see it all the time. But I think we want to keep, you know, the best of the old stuff, but also be able to, you know, add new stuff that's going to, you know, be good for the community as well.
Thank you, Brian. I just want to say thank you to the task force members. They put in a lot of time and a lot of thoughtful debate into this. And that's just showing the community at work, working for their, our constituents, as well as the interests of the neighborhoods. So thank you to the task force for all the work that you guys have put into it. With that, Mike, I think I'll hand it to you. I think we can open it for public comment?
We do, yes, thank you, President Sokolowski, we do. We open it up for public comment at this time. There is a court reporter here taking down everything you say, so please speak slowly and clearly. And while one person is talking, please don't yell out from the audience, not because we don't want you to be animated, but only because the court reporter won't be able to take it down. Again, let's do this orderly. Don't necessarily need you to line up or anything like that, but if there are comments from the public, now is the appropriate time to provide those comments. And try not to repeat what the individual ahead of you said, but if you have new thoughts and comments, they're absolutely welcome at this meeting. That's what it's for. So are there any comments from the general public?
Come on in.
Please, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Donna Coll. I live at 324 Fayette Street in Conshohocken. C-O-L-L. Mike, I have two questions, basically the same question. What is underutilized? What would make a property unutilized?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, is counsel okay with Judy answering some of these questions? Certainly, Judy, go ahead.
Underutilized would be something that's not, well, to use the word, not fully used to its highest and best use. So for instance, if a building exists on a site and half of it is vacant, that would be underutilized.
Okay, and for no other reason but being vacant?
No, that's an example.
Okay.
Underutilized could be something that is a non-performing use. Maybe at the front of it is a viable use, and the back is just used for storage or something. It could be used, but not to what's highest and best use or potential.
And who would make that decision?
That is not a decision that needs to be made as part of this ordinance.
Okay.
That's not a decision. It would be the property owner, or someone that was hoping to develop it in conjunction with the property owner possibly buying it, would determine if they wanted to use the overlay district. There's not a requirement that a property be deemed underutilized or vacant in order to use this district, if that was your question.
That was my question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else have any questions about the overlay? Please come up to the microphone.
Well, my first comment
Sir, if you could please just name an address for
David Rollins, 1013 Fayette Street.
Oh, your last name?
R-O-L-L-I-N-S. Yeah, I live in zone three, and I looked at the zoning ordinance. And it's my opinion that's a rehash of the PROFCO overlay that the court threw out for spot zoning. It's designed just to put that market in, in the Moore property. There's no way you're going to put parking in any of those buildings that exist in that zone. Those twin houses, there's no space for that parking. If you put a business on the first floor, that's a total of five parking spaces off-street. There's no way, unless you knock a building down, you're going to have parking space. That's my opinion, this thing was designed for PROFCO's benefit. Now, also, I have a question. Since there's so many twin houses in this area, if somebody decides to extend out to the sidewalk, like you want to do, to 15 feet, what about the neighboring twin? Who guarantees the foundation? Who's guaranteeing? They have that problem in Philadelphia with the row houses. Row houses next door collapse when they put the new addition up next door. Who's guaranteeing that the person next door? My third thing I have is the traffic. Conshohocken Police does nothing to control the traffic on Fayette Street because it's a state highway. They speed to that light at 11th Avenue after four o'clock at 50 miles an hour. You've got school buses going through there at 40 miles an hour during the day. Dump trucks going through there, that light going towards Plymouth at 11th Avenue. You have people going from 9th Avenue revving up between 25 up to 50 miles an hour to get through that light. You put that market in there, there's going to be more accidents, you're going to want to see. Conshohocken Police will do nothing about the traffic because it says it's a state highway. And they're not allowed to chase anybody anymore, stop anybody. Now, relative to the parking, I've looked at this, unless you give them a variance, there's no place they can put parking in, except at the Moore property. Or maybe my property, because I've got a big lot next door. This thing was designed for PROFCO's benefit because I own the Moore property now. Well, and certain developers think they can make some money, put some, yeah, but what about the neighbors? You extend one of these twin houses out to the curb, what about the people next door? They're going to be in the shade all day. What about their properties? You're going to destroy the value of their property. I know I have a beauty salon next to my house, it destroys the value of my property because a beauty salon was put in before zoning. Goes out to the sidewalk. Nothing has been taken into consideration, the people that live there now. What they're trying to do is force these people out so they can redo Fayette Street. But that's all I have to say. I've gone through this zoning, and I went through the, went through all the PROFCO's hearings, and it's just the same thing, restated. Because the parking provisions alone will prohibit any of this renovation, except for the Moore property. Unless you, people give a variance, which in here you say you won't. The Moore properties, every time they come into all these zoning hearings, they give variances like they're giving out water.
Anyone else?
Name an address for the record, please.
Sure. Rudolph, R-U-D-O-L-P-H, Schatz, S-C-H-A-T-Z, 1009 Fayette. As I'm sitting here listening to the description of the ordinance, I'm thinking of myself, I think it's in Atlantic City, the little old lady who refused to sell to the casino and wound up being surrounded by it. Somehow or other, there seems to be a disconnect Somehow or other, there seems to be a disconnect between the people living in Conchi and folks who would like to make a business out of it. When I read that there is going to be an encouragement of economic development and redevelopment of underutilized properties, I'm wondering how many of the people who actually live in the area feel that their places are being underutilized? Now, I live in one of those big old houses, and there are 11 of us living there. There have been 11 of us living there since, I'm going to take a guess and say 1990. Our kids roller skated up and down those streets. Those of you who've been around here long enough might remember Katie, who had one leg and crutches, who wound up speeding down as fast as anybody else. I don't see a particular problem in terms of human capital, of people driving through Conchi, turning around and saying, hey, it's not just a place to do business, it's a place to live. Our block, the 1000 block, has nine businesses and 10 residences. I, I'm not quite sure that providing housing for people who are capable of affording it is an underutilization of property. I, I think if we're going to talk, as the gentleman before with zoning talked about, balancing things, you know, we, we do want to be an economically productive town, but we don't necessarily want to turn around and turn our back on the idea that we're also Max Adler, who was an editor for the Bulletin, who lived on Fifth Avenue years and years and years ago, kept writing books about Conshohocken that went as far as London. And he was talking about the lovely village with tree-lined streets. Well, nobody's expecting that fantasy anymore. Conshohocken is by the Blue Room. Conshohocken has business. But I, I think there's, I think we're missing something if we're thinking of turning the town into an extended strip mall.
Hello. Mary Tiernan, 1016 Harry Street.
Sure, T-I-E-R-N-A-N.
I want to thank everyone on the task force. I can only imagine all of the work that it took. I want to thank my neighbors. I agree with their concerns. As somebody on Harry Street, Ralph relates to my concerns, I'm sure, I'm not the only resident who expressed that. I just don't know how this is going to be the impact on us for parking, for property values, for the impervious coverage. I appreciate that you tried to take that into account a little bit for Zone 3, but we've all seen how much more powerful storms are. As you have more development there, that's more water coming down to us that we all have to deal with. The idea of parking, that there's sufficient parking already or that there will be parking instead of Zone 3, you might as well make it the land of make-believe. I, I just don't see it. We already get such an overlap from Conshohocken Physical Therapy. And they're good neighbors. I've used them. I love that they're a block away, but we have staff and patients parking on Harry Street already from seven o'clock on. That's just one business there. There is going to be, and, and when you talk about the parking can go for 200 feet, I don't even know what that means. If you're looking at that for one property, okay, but then if you incentivize other development, I, I just don't see where it's going to go. My concern about property value, I, I forget which person said that it can increase property value. I'm sure that it can, if you're on the overlay. I'm sure, that is one of my concerns, and I mean this with all due respect, some of the people that were on the, and took a huge amount of time and effort, but some of the people who have been on this committee stand to gain if they sell their property, if they can have, you know, extra layers there, if, if it's incentivizing them to have this mixed use, they have more to gain than I think my neighbors and I on Harry Street or on the avenues do. Sure, if you can, you know, sell to a developer to put up whatever, that's great for you, but what about for us on Harry Street? What about for us, for the neighbors on Forest? I understand what you talked about wanting to minimize curb cuts, and I think that that is a great thing for the walkability, but if you're shooting traffic more to Forest or the avenues or potentially on Harry Street, nibble by nibble, gobble by gobble, we're going to become Fayette Street 1 and Fayette Street 2. Somebody mentioned about all of the wonderful development in Ambler, but I don't, you know, you have a broader base there, and I don't know, going back in Ambler, I don't think that they had the residents that they have there now. I, I don't know, but that's one of my concerns as well. I have a concern about the vagueness of some of the language. We've talked about preserving the historical nature of the houses. There's a paragraph in here that this overrides prior things, so the incentives that have been here to preserve the, you know, the lovely houses up there, the character of the upper avenues, if there's a conflict, a developer can say, well, look at this paragraph here that unless, except for the zoning, this overrides what we've been trying to do as a borough for decades and decades. You know, I think back to decades ago with McTammany's, all of, all of the hard work that you all have done and your predecessors to keep that nature. I'm old enough, I remember the sign Pleasant Valley when it used to be outside of the dry cleaner, which might be a four-story whatever in your rendering. But welcome to Pleasant Valley. And to me, one of the things for Pleasant Valley was that it is a quieter area on there, that we have the residents, that we see the neighbors' kids. We have kids on Harry Street. I don't want people zooming around for parking. I don't want that extra development. I, I just, I love the euphemism underutilized. I mean, what is going to be properly utilized? I also, I do have a question as well about incentivizing more development. Are there additional tax benefits or things to incentivize current property owners to have increased development? When you talk about incentivizing more development, are you talking about tax rebates or grants or just that the language allows them to build up more?
Yeah, I wasn't actually talking of incentivizing development. This was giving more opportunity and options for development for existing property owners. So it, there is nothing in here about taxing, tax rebates. There's no incentive. That was a term used by other people.
Yes, yes.
It's not in the ordinance.
That's why I wanted to ask on that one as well. Okay.
And the issue with underutilized, if I just, just.
Please, go ahead.
Property that's being used for residential is not underutilized. No, no, I just don't want anyone to misconstrue anything that I said or read between the lines. A property that's used for a single-family home is not underutilized. A property used for multi-family is not underutilized. A property that had been used for residential is no longer residential, will happen to be vacant, could be considered underutilized, but in no way, I, I don't want anyone in the borough to think that residential use is underutilized. I think that that would insult the task force if someone thought that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that. And my last point, sorry, I don't want to monopolize too much time. I think that the overlay, I, I can't figure out for Zone 3 what it means for 11th Avenue and Harry Street. Currently on 11th and Fayette, what had been years ago, many years ago, Dr. D's and, Dr. D. Pescuaz, and then real estate, that's been open for development for years, it has a huge will-built-to-suit. I'm not sure how the overlay goes for 11th Avenue, and, and the coloring here is a little different from what was on the website earlier. I can't tell if this overlay goes down to 11th and Harry, if it just means it's including the current property there on 11th and Fayette Street that has some parking on 11th.
I would need to show you on the screen. Can we blow that up, Paige? Can we enlarge that? Yeah. And just a little more. It, we're, it's, we're looking up at the top of the map.
11th, you can draw it down.
Sorry. I just assumed that everyone knows. Yeah, a little bit larger for her, still plays just a little bit. So when, so you're looking at 11th?
Yes.
And Harry, which you can see, so it comes out to Harry from 12th to 11th. There's that little parcel on the corner that is, doesn't come all the way out to Fayette, so that's not included. And there's the properties on Harry between the corner and down a little on 10th that do not go all the way to Fayette. So only the properties that go to Fayette are in the overlay.
So, because it, it's just confusing where you have the coloring there. I know it doesn't have the slash lines, but.
The coloring is the existing RO zoning district.
Okay.
And the lines on top, the lines and the dots are the overlay on top of the existing, so the orangey rust color is the RO and the pinky color is the other district. So they're the existing zoning districts, and then the overlay or the pattern shown on the map graphically showing the overlay.
Right. It just, yeah, to me, it looks, it's still a little confusing of what it opens up or doesn't. At the very least, I think that's something that needs to be clarified, because when I looked at it, I'm like, does this mean it's all of 11th? I know on the other side of 11th, like where you have, for the physical therapist, you have that there. I don't want to see it coming down. I understand there's the current bit on 11th where you have the, you know, the vacant building on 11th and Fayette and the parking there. I don't want it going, authorizing for the two neighbors there, because that would be, you know.
Do you mind if I show her on the map that doesn't have the overlay, so you can see it easier?
Anything you can do to help, I would like.
It just, and thank you, and it could be the difference, what's on the computer, and just, and I am not the best on maps.
Cat, that's got this steadied up.
Existing zoning map without any overlay, so anything that actually intersects with Fayette is in the overlay, and if it doesn't, like this would be it, but this wouldn't. So you're, you're talking about 11th and Harry right here, correct?
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking the two properties that are there that are residential on 11th between Fayette and Harry.
Yeah.
They're not included.
Right. Anything, if it fronts on Fayette, it's included. If it doesn't front on Fayette, and this is what Judy was talking about earlier, like some of these over here front on Fayette and go all the way back to Forest, like this would go all the way back to Harry, but this only goes so far, so they're the ones that are in the overlay. You can keep that. That's on the current, that's on the borough website now.
I have that on the website now. Thank you.
And the heavy dark black line is the demarcation between the overlay and the remainder of any of those districts.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you all the work, for the work that you've done, just because I disagree and I'm against it, I do, I really appreciate all the effort that everybody put in, but for me, it's just, it's going to be something fundamentally changing the nature of the town. And with that, I know that you gave notification. I would suggest that we give notification for another hearing, because I know that you've had it on social media, not everybody has time pulling that up. We're looking at something that can change this town for decades. I, I, I think that it's worth more discussion, more advertising, giving people a chance to really understand the ramifications. If, for example, the computer renderings, even though it was, you know, just a rendering on that, that gives a different picture, and I think having that perspective would be very helpful for people and for you to hear from all of your residents as well. Thank you.
All right, Jackie, your turn.
Good evening. My name's Jackie Cole, 810 Forest Street, Conshohocken, Pennsylvania. Cole, C-O-L-L. I live on Forest Street, kind of behind Feen, just to give you a general area of where I live. So that's Zone 2, right on the edge of Zone 3. The properties in front of me are Fayette Street and their parking lots back out onto Forest Street. So with some of these proposed apartment buildings slash mixed use that could come in, those cars and underground apartments would then drain onto Forest Street, causing an additional traffic. So if it's a 26 apartments, that could be 52 additional cars coming to a one-way street, Forest Street, which is already tight on parking. So I just would like that to be considered additional cars. Just because it's one apartment, that's two to three people living there, just like the renters next door, that's six cars. Three people plus their boyfriend, six cars. Kindergarten was full this year at Conshohocken Elementary. There was a waitlist, so if we are encouraging additional apartments to be built, I want to make sure that we have enough schools for these kids. My neighbor, 8th and Forest Street, couldn't get into Conchi Elementary, couldn't get into Ridge Park, was put on waitlist for both. Eventually got into Conshohocken Elementary three weeks after school started. The renderings on the three properties shown, the one shown between 9th and 10th on Fayette Street, the one shown at Town Valet, and the one shown at the Moore property, I don't think any of them have the character of our town or what we're looking for. I think they're just boxes. So the fact that there are renderings and being proposed as mixed use, I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think we want to keep the character of the mansions on the upper avenues. We've already lost so many. There's slideshows, there's history to show you this. But if we're talking about knocking down that doctor's office, which is now an office building, and putting up a three-story, it looks like a block to me, it doesn't have any character. That's not the character I think we want for our upper avenues. Again, task force, everybody's saying you guys did a great job. I'm sure this was a huge undertaking for everybody, but are there specific buildings asking for these mixed use, or is this just the borough asking for general permission for when these opportunities come? So I wasn't sure if that was specific owners of these lands looking to put in 26 apartments and cars and tunnels and stuff like that, or if it's just, if someone comes, we want a blanket approval. I'm very unclear on that.
So I can answer that. So when we did the comprehensive plan and had the community input sessions, as well as some of the community surveys, one of the things that the community is asking for is more walkability for activities towards that upper end. So this was a way for us to look at what can we do to bring more types of businesses in that upper end, because we've got a dead zone, right, and based on the way that the buildings are right now. So this is really in response to what the community has asked for, which is why we're, we have community input and we put together a community task force to say, what else can we look at that could meet what it is that the community is looking for as we move forward? That's what, that's.
Okay.
It isn't the borough looking to make accommodations for people to bring big buildings in. It's, it's in response to community input on what they're looking for, for the future of our Main Street corridor.
That's a very great answer, and thank you for taking the time. I don't understand what we're bringing walkability to 9th, 10th, and 11th. We're not putting in a park. We're not putting in an ice cream shop. What businesses do you think would come in that would increase the walkability? I don't think Wegmans would.
I think that's what the intention of the overlay is to allow the uses of those buildings to put things like that to make it a destination to walk to versus not having it there in our current ordinance in the RO district.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Betsy Horning, H-O-R-N-I-N-G, 404 East 10th Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. I hear a lot of the neighbors saying, you know, how's it going to affect our property values? Has a specific impact study been done for the business district overlay and the surrounding blocks and streets on what impact this proposed business district overlay would have on current property values?
Is that a question?
That's a question.
No, we have not done that.
Okay. And with the impervious. Okay. And with the impervious percentage being increased for some of the zones in the overlay district, how's it going to affect the stormwater runoff and what's going to be done to make sure that the lower blocks from the overlay aren't being flooded? Because I live at the bottom of the hill and every time it rains, and I think Mary Kirdan mentioned with a lot of the atmospheric disturbances, we get hit hard. I mean, our street curb to curb is flooded with water. Our sidewalks are flooded. So if you have more impervious areas, where's the water going to go?
Should I? The borough has stringent stormwater management ordinances in effect now, and that would need to be an integral part of any design for any reuse or redevelopment of any property in the borough would need to comply with the stormwater management and floodplain.
But it currently hasn't been taken into effect with the proposed overlay as it stands right now?
That's not quite true. The overlay is an overlay into the zoning ordinance to permit additional uses or optional uses. And stormwater management is a code, a separate code of the ordinance that needs to be adhered to no matter what someone's doing on those properties. So it has been taken into account because it's part of the code of ordinances of the town, of the borough that exist and will be enforced.
If you don't mind, could I ask you a question? You brought up a great point. Judy, can you talk about properties now that don't meet stormwater code and how that... I view this, and please, I mean, I guess I'm making a point, I'm asking to be corrected too, that there may be properties now that do not comply with stormwater management codes because they were grandfathered in. And if they are redeveloped, now they would have to come into compliance with those codes. So...
That's an excellent question. There are many properties in the borough, in the greater region, that were developed without stormwater management taken into account at all. Anything developed in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 70s might have had some minimal stormwater, but not much. Anything developed in the 80s or 90s had some stormwater management component, but not to the stringent level that you have today. Even in the early 2000s, the stormwater management provisions and requirements of your ordinance and other ordinances in the region are much more stringent now. So that if something had been developed early, and I would say most of the corridor has been developed pre-stormwater management requirements, anything that's going in now should improve the situation. I say should because if we have a storm that dumps eight inches of rain in a 24-hour period, there's no stormwater management that's going to preclude the water from flooding in the lowest part of the borough and from the river up. If we have a hurricane, Ida, I don't want you to think that your stormwater management is saving any properties, Hurricane Ida and other things like that. You understand those issues, but...
But traditional floodplains.
Yes, but the stormwater management ordinance and your floodplain ordinance are in effect and they're stringent.
Because I can just imagine that Conshohocken will be the next sinkhole. We're hearing it in Plymouth and White Marsh. You got all that water running down. It cracks the McAdam, the soil erodes away. You know, you're going to have a big sinkhole open up in the middle of the street.
So I don't, I'd actually like to comment on that. So I don't take that comment lightly, right? That is serious. We do have very strict stormwater management, and we could have another hearing on being even more strict with our stormwater management. So I would like to make the point that this, any redevelopment would have to comply with the latest and greatest of the code. As opposed to a property that isn't developed or is grandfathered in because of past years could actually be causing more of a problem down the hill than it would be if we put something else in that, on that property. So I'm not saying what my opinion is yet, but I just wanted to make a point to that part of the discussion, so.
And then my last one, the rendering of the farmer's market on the Moore property. Are we going to have the same issues that were argued with the Wawa? I'm going to assume here, and I know what assuming does to you, if they're going to be leaving on Fayette Street, they'll only be able to make a right turn?
That would be determined during the land development proceedings and when there's a specific proposal. I have to say that the renderings that we prepared were showing the maximum that could be permitted. So they, they were big because it would be the maximum. If we did something that I thought would be more appropriate for what could, what would most likely happen, we would be accused of not showing what could happen at the max. So I want you to take that with, in that light. But until a development is before the borough, I can't tell you where the traffic is going to go and where the driveways will be.
Because the Moore property extends all the way back, I believe, to the A field. And there's the little one-block lane and a half that cars would be potentially coming out of, making a right or left turn. And, you know, we have our athletic field there. And if we want Conshohocken to be walkable, we want them to walk to that venue. What's going to happen to the safety of the children? Because, you know, children don't listen. They're going to run out in the street and you've got cars flying out of whatever is in there, whether it's apartments, a farmer's market, or multiple retail outlets. What's going to be done to ensure the safety of those that are walking or even the young children or adults, but other teens we got going on there that are utilizing the A field?
Is that a question?
That's a question, yes. What's going to be done to protect the safety of the residents?
Yeah, and when that land development comes in, I would expect council to be very involved in it. And I would also expect the residents and neighbors to be involved in those proceedings and voice your opinions when there's something concrete before the borough that you can, you could have input on. But right now, it's theoretical and hypothetical, and I would hesitate to give any answers because there's no plan before the borough.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Mary Ann Cook, 401 East 10th Avenue. So again, thank you all for your service and for the committee for its work. And I had read the original draft overlay and it looked really interesting to me and a lot of good things in that. And so I just have some questions where maybe I can get some clarity on some points that, without repeating what other folks have already brought up. So I do support balanced development in this town. It's why I moved back here a few years ago and renovated an older home on this 10th. And I'm trying to reconcile in my mind the idea of walkable, increasing our walkability. I love this town. I walk all over it for my exercise. And making it more walkable when I see a lot of walkers, at the same time, we are increasing the intensity of use and the density through the whole strip, end to end. We're talking about a lot about the upper avenues, but let's face it, we love our town and everyone in it. And it starts at the bridge and all the way up, and that's where all of this impacts. So with that said, just a few questions. Talked already a little bit about the parking, and just to drill down to the nitty gritty, do we foresee, and we'll have some more questions about the parking, do we foresee that potentially there could be a need for permit parking being required in areas in the BR1 and even lower down in the BR2 because of this overflow parking in the overlay zones and this common area that we're talking about? Is that a potential eventuality where residents will be required to get permit parking?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think we have an answer yet, or is something that we will be evaluating?
Because we already had some in some, because parking's an issue. Okay, just a question on that, okay. So I think we already talked about in all zones to be overlay eligible. Residential uses are not permitted on the first floor. And Judy, you mentioned that, hey, this is an opportunity for a property owner or developer. If they have a parcel in the overlay area, they can take advantage and apply for the overlay zoning. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. They would have the right to use the options in the overlay if they want, or they could utilize the existing zoning that they have.
Okay.
And that, those rights are not taken away from them.
So it could, so it can, so this is great. This is helpful. It can go both ways. So if I am a homeowner, a residential homeowner in the current RO, and I went to apply for the overlay, I can still maintain that first-floor residential use? If I apply for the overlay?
If you are a residential property or a property owner and you want to maintain the residential, then you would stay with your RO zoning. If you wanted to take advantage of the other options in the overlay, then you would need to comply with all the regulations in the overlay, which would not have residential on the first floor.
Okay. So that might mean if I am a resident and I wanted to take advantage and currently experiencing residential use, and I wanted to take advantage of an overlay zoning, I'd have to maybe evaluate whether I wanted to continue to maintain a residence on Fayette Street or give it up and take advantage of development on Fayette Street in the Fayette Street corridor and flip to an overlay?
Right, take advantage of the residential or take advantage of the overlay?
Move upstairs. But I couldn't maintain a first-floor type environment residence as I might have now?
Correct.
Okay, just, I just, that's, I just wanted to be clear on that.
If you choose the RO, if you choose the overlay option.
Right, right, right. But nobody's going to make me, I think you talked about...
No, no, I understood what you were asking. That was the point. No one's making you leave your house.
Right, right. Nobody's going to make me do it unless somebody comes along with some big bank, and then I might consider it, right? So, okay, I just wanted to be, to be clear on that. So where specifically in the overlay zone, does it discuss preservation or protection of structures that are historical, whether they are named? Because I know we have those specific properties, which is great in Conshie, that are specifically named as historical or architectural or culturally unique, or unique interests that are, I think we all see when we drive down that main, our main drag in Conshie, that, I mean, that's the heart of what makes Conshohocken, I think, for years so attractive. We have our number one mayor here. And it was, as withdrawn people, like me and others, families back to Conshohocken, that maintain that character. Where specifically is that in the overlay that helps to support to maintain that?
It's not in this overlay. There is an HRC overlay district, which is in effect for the entire borough, and that's regarding existing historic single-family dwellings. And those structures are protected in accordance with that ordinance, which is in full force and effect. This FCO district, the Fayette-Carter overlay district, does not negate that at all.
And how do we define those single-family historic?
Over, 50 years or older.
Okay, okay. So again, that doesn't preclude them from necessarily, so that's the historic homes, but it could be any one of those structures, you know, we've lost a lot of 50. I was looking back at some of our other, the comprehensive borough plan from, you know, pre-pandemic 2018, our open space plan, it listed a lot of homes, and they're just not around now. So, I mean, that doesn't, that's not necessarily a preservation protection. It's kind of almost like guidance. Here's where they are. You still have to go through a process, but it's not, it's not, it's not going to make them necessarily a shield against potential demolition. There's steps you have to go through. Growing pains or growing old pains.
I can answer that. You need to go through a conditional use process. And I, and there's, there's two distinctions. That only applies to single-family homes 50 years or older that are still being used as single-family homes, which I, which I think you caught on already.
Okay.
And you go through a conditional use process, and you have to meet the standards for that conditional use. So it's a little more than just growing pains. There is a legal standard.
Okay.
But it is not impossible because that's why you have a conditional use. That's why there's a process.
Okay, got you. Thank you, thank you. So will a property owner or developer in an overlay district, say Zone Two, be able to apply for a relief, or I'm learning my zoning language lately, or a special exception for use permitted only in overlay Zone One at some point? Can they ask? Can they apply for it?
So I think either legal or might...
No, I can answer that. So I think...
Could that happen?
I think, I think your question is if there's a use permitted in Zone One but not Zone Two, does this ordinance allow you to ask for a special exception or variance?
I'm right on the line. Look what's going on next door.
So the answer is you couldn't request a special exception because that's a specific type of relief. You can always request a zoning variance, always. So whether or not you meet the standards for that zoning variance is a different question. And whether or not in requesting that variance, you're truly complying with the overlay is a different question. But you could always ask. You apply to the zoning hearing board and you ask for it.
God bless America. I can always ask for it. Okay. So even if I'm in Zone Three, overlay Zone Three, and I'm looking at, you know, there's some really interesting, great uses, you know, that could apply for the overlay. I could ask if I could get a special exception or variance for a use that's in Zone One or Zone Two. I could ask.
You could ask. Now, the intent, the whole purpose of the overlay is so that you don't have to go through that process. So it wouldn't make sense to go through that process, but you could ask, just as you're going to ask under current zoning today.
Right, right, got you. Thank you. This kind of came up before, but I wasn't really clear on the answer. So are there limitations on developers purchasing multiple adjacent lots in the overlay zones?
No, sorry, do you mind if I answer that one?
Go right ahead, Judy.
No, there are no, no provisions that would preclude that, just as there are no provisions that would preclude that under your existing zoning ordinance and regulations. Somebody has the right to sell their property and other people have the right to buy the property to mutually agree upon contract.
So I'll, I'll ask Mike a question, just to follow up to that question. Is there a legal way to prevent people from buying multiple?
No, in terms of law consolidation, no, there's no legal way to prevent that from occurring.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, without an overlay, the incentive for another buyer to do that might not be as compelling as it could be with overlay zones. I mean, that's just an economic reality. It would be for me. I would be more interested. I might be with overlays. I mean, that, we're talking about development. That's real, that's what we're talking about. Some of it could be really good. But I'm just pointing out, and I'm getting clear in my mind, what some of that development could look like, right? Yeah, I mean, for sure.
Yes, I would say this gives flexibility to develop it in a different way than what we've seen historically, yes.
Right, okay. No, you're great. Thank you, thank you. Can current overlay zones, as they're being proposed, be expanded at some future date? I mean, I know we revised the comprehensive plan, we go back and look at other things, but, you know, so here's our zones now. All, you know, I know the 2018 plan, the population estimates were not quite, we're six years in, or not quite now where they were projected to be. But, you know, thanks to all the development adjacent municipalities and in the borough, the population's expanding. We need to take another look at the overlay zones. Is that actually possible?
I can answer that question. The zoning map, although it needs to be changed consistent with the law, can be changed at any time, yes.
Right, again, this is America. It can happen, right?
It's American, yes.
I love it. I love this country.
And I'll tag on to that just a little bit further. The idea is communities do continuously strategic plan for the changes that are going on. So yes, we have a 2018 comprehensive plan. We need to redo a comprehensive plan again with the changes that have occurred in the borough, and we'll be looking to do that. Now, all of this comes at a cost, so you want timing and cost to make sense for what's going on in the community. So you strategically plan for those types of activities to be able to then look at enhancing, limiting, whatever you want to do with your community at those times.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And so, and going back to the idea, like the preservation and the other things, like, I would prefer, just myself personally, I mean, and looking at the, it looks like people spend a lot, the task force spent a lot of time on this. I mean, and just looking at other overlays for a variety of uses, including, you know, business commercial or Main Street, and this is, starts out as Main Street, but we are Fayette Street for a lot of reasons that Cole just wrote up recently. They seem to be a little bit more explicit and specific about things that they care about. And I think, you know, there's, it's no... it's no secret what most people in this town care about. And so I would like to, my preference would be to see a little more specificity, and I think you've heard some of the things here tonight, because our experience as a community has been where there is the slightest ambiguity, people with the best interests at heart, you all, volunteers, sometimes can get taken advantage of. And the people who suffer are the community. And before you know it, and this is more of a comment than a question, we've all seen in surrounding communities, we see it on social media, Conche gets, you know, Conche is like Philly. We're not Philly. But how these areas around urban areas like Philly turn into Philly is when there's change through zoning, when commercial districts are forced out because of money, when money pressures and economic pressures, when small businesses flee Main Street. They don't entirely go away. They push into surrounding residential areas. Residents get fed up because there's no parking, there's other issues, and then you have, you get absorbed into the surrounding urban areas. I'm not telling you all anything you don't know. That's not what we want for our beautiful mixed-use community, which features a pearl of beauty in our residential areas that are already struggling, and you hear that all the time. So I will just conclude with just a couple of more questions about the parking. So it says in the overlay, non-residential use is still required to provide a minimum of three, and you talked about this, Judy, in your presentation, three parking spaces for every thousand square feet of gross floor area. So the parking for the overlay zones are going to be driven by square footage and not the uses that are potentially proposed for the overlays. Is that correct?
The, it's, there's a requirement for the non-residential component and a separate requirement for the residential, so it is use-related.
Okay.
But it's not specific use. For instance, retail is not separate from office because those uses, we envision the flexibility and they could change and evolve. And once the property is developed, there's probably not going to be more opportunity to create more parking, so let's have it for the building as it's built.
So I guess I'm trying to visualize, you know, I'm thinking if you're rendering, so like, you know, the old Caldwell Banker building next to the cemetery, that's about 5,000 square feet. So when I think of a building like that, how many parking spaces, in theory, for off-street parking would this require?
If, would it have a residential component? Would it have, would it all be non-residential?
Mm-hmm.
So if it was, if it was 5,000 square feet of non-residential, that would be, five times three, that would be 15 parking spaces.
15 parking spaces. So regardless of whether, to your point, it would be retail or a restaurant or a yoga studio, it would be 15 off-street parking spaces.
They would walk there, though.
Oh, that's right. They're walking there. I forgot. They're walking uphill because it's such a problem now. I forgot about that.
Exercise.
Okay. So I guess that's my point. Regardless of the intensity of use, which we have to deal with now when we request for zoning, there could be still some underlying zoning issues, but right now it would be 15 parking spaces.
If it was 5,000 square feet.
Right, right, okay. So I guess another question about, I'm still a little fuzzy on this common area. Could you tell me, like, in practical sense and in your experience, like, what does that really look like in communities like ours, where you have this common parking area within 200 feet in residential areas, yeah?
The shared parking?
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, two more establishments shall submit on their application for conditional use, a site plan showing the location of a common off-street parking area.
That's if somebody is looking to have the parking elsewhere than on their site. So that's a specific situation. And it, it exists in small burrows everywhere. I see that in Ambler, in Doylestown Borough, in Quaker Town Borough, in Park City, in Sellersville. There are shared parking opportunities off-site, so it would look like a parking lot between two uses or near, near uses.
What would that look like, though, in, you studied Conche Hocken, what would that look like in Conche Hocken within 200 feet of Fayette Street? I mean, what would an example of like a shared, if you had two businesses coming together or someone maybe taking up multiple lots?
It could be, it could be two sets of twins and the end unit from, the two middle ones essentially, could have some parking between them and they're sharing that as a common parking lot. It could be the common backyards between those two, because it has to be in the side or rear of the building. It can't be in the front. It could be, it's hard to visualize without being site-specific, but it would be a common parking lot shared by two or more users.
Okay.
If we, if we could, if we could pause for a second. Ed, are you still good? Do you need a break? Okay.
And I would just, so I appreciated the renderings. And I know as part of a project like this, I could not agree more that whether you are for parts of it, and I am, or entirely against it, or know that, I mean, more businesses, smaller businesses, on, you know, with, you know, certain limitations would be great. I think that comparable plans have a lot more specificity, and this does not. And I'm afraid of what remains of the beautiful town that we have left to us today, that we want to nurture with care into the future, is at risk, not from any ill intention here, but from people coming in who just are doing their jobs and want to make money for their clients and their corporations will do to what remains of the beautiful main area of our town that will impact the one square mile. We, I haven't seen yet how we increase our one square mile. And so I would like to see some specificity in this plan protecting that. And back to the renderings, my observation is, I would love to see, and you know you can do it, give me a CGI video of what a drive down our Main Street will look like in five years or 10 years or 20 years, because the prior plans all have little bits of images here what it looks like. And we can, and I know the Coles can dial up right now what our Main Street looked like just 20 years ago downtown, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, unrecognizable. Now, reasonable minds can differ whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. You can't turn back the clock. And this decision will impact our town forever. And I think it deserves more than just a few people coming together tonight. Shouldn't be us. And I think it's great that we had some task force meetings in the community coming together. I wish I had known about it. My fault, I guess. And I'm on social media. You saw even this weekend, I know some of you did, somebody saying, "Break it down. I don't get it." That's sad. That, I don't think is their fault. That's our fault. If the message isn't getting through, don't blame the customer. This is one of the biggest decisions you all will make. And I think, I do believe our town deserves more, and I think it should start with at least more specificity in the overlay, where comparable overlays go on for dozens of pages, 20, 30 pages. Not out of any malice or not applying property owners the reasonable use of their properties, but to protect all parties. Everybody has rights. And that's all I have to say. And again, thank you for your, and thank you. I mean, this, I know, is a big project, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
How's it going? Mike Denofe?
D E N, capital N O L F I, Level 114 West 10th Avenue. Basically, half a block, block off of the, the upper section there. And people don't realize the impact that traffic does happen with all the buildings and stuff like this. I could shoot off about 15 different topics about what's, what'll happen, what could happen, what could not happen. First of all, renderings are renderings. They, they're just scotched. They're giving you a idea of what could possibly be there. I understand that. I'm not sure everybody understands that here. But it's the impact of putting a building that size, whether it's got nice windows, whether it looks like a warehouse, whether it looks like Amerisource Bergen, you know what I mean, or whatever it's called now. There's a lot of things to change. Your stormwater and your impact with that, I don't think one thing people don't realize, they talk about what happens in Conche Hocken, but like everything that happens with that, the stormwater affects us all the way up to Schuylkill County, as far as that river goes up there, Schuylkill River. It also affects the railroad tracks that go all the way up through Plymouth, that go all the way up to Lower Gwinnett. The railroad tracks basically have the same water shed that comes down to this area, and it also comes into the Whitchickon, around where Green Valley's at or, so when that water table goes up high, the, the river can crest, and then you run the risk of having your police down there, your fire down there. And really, when you do stuff like this, when you might open the door for having a big building like that, grocer, or say if they were going to knock down the old Fine and Gallivan office, you know, on the, between Ninth and 10th on Fayette Street on the left-hand side, or even say they were going to do something with the, the property where Ashley's Deli was at, because that's half-open, which could be considered not being used in their potential right now because it's vacant. Like, when you do that, like, I don't know if they realize that, like, you figure out the water usage of the stormwater coming off by the square footage of the roof. I mean, you put a, a grocer in or something like that, that big, where you're gonna have, you know, cars parked underneath, where it's gonna be half the size of a football field or even a quarter of a block. There's a lot of impact to that where that water's gotta go somewhere. You can do self-surface drainage where you have underground water retention. I've seen it done before. I worked big construction. I worked for site contractors doing their plumbing. And it's just like, there's a lot to it. But when that water goes up and you gotta send a first responder down there, which by the way, most of them are volunteers here, and a lot of them are families, you know what I mean, you send the police down there, you know what I mean, to do this stuff, because people are like, "Oh, nothing's gonna happen. We don't have to move our cars." You know, like, you really, there's a lot of things that like, could be like the what-ifs. What if one of your first responders don't come home? You know what I mean? Now, what if also too, the, the water's not done right or some calculations done wrong, because I see engineers do it all the time. We saw it here with the cables in this building for the slab, where you couldn't, where you had the core drilled, they needed the x-ray, everything. I've seen it done in 16 buildings like that in my construction career. You know what I mean? There, there's always that what-if for error. And like we said before, you can't bring something back to what it was. You know, this town has always been a walking community. I remember walking my grandmother from 114 West 5th Avenue to the Acme and bringing stuff back, because it was one car for the house. Now there's not one car for the house. So you're gonna have the parking issues. And going back, if they're gonna build something like the grocer or where Doc Fine and Gallivan's office was, they're talking about putting 26, 26 parking spots underground. That involves a lot of digging, a lot of dump trucks, and there are major rock structures all over underground here. I had someone on 11th Avenue had to change a footprint out, whether they had to, whether they had to blast and drill or just blow, and just spend more time labor-intensive, stuff like that. I know a guy in Cedar Heights that had to flip, flip, flip a house plan because there was a major rock structure that was not in the budget to get out of the way. Now, if you're doing that, and I live in a house that's over 100 years old, and I have a house two doors away from me that's over 100 years old, if they're blasting, you hear all that, or if they're, they're jacking that up, what's to say if they do that on Fayette Street and say the one of the three properties between the old Ashley's Deli's and it is Dr. Fine and Gallivan's office, what's to say foundation, of something that doesn't happen with the foundation while there and it caves in? Who's gonna be on the hook for that? You know what I mean? That's things you gotta look at. I mean, there's big picture share. I mean, everybody wants this borough to improve to get more tax dollars. But people invested in this borough, they're investing to make money. They call it an investment, you know what I mean? But unlike what people don't realize is, like, investments are like the stock market. It goes up, it goes down. They all cry when they have an investment and it's not producing. Now, you have a lot of people that were on this committee that don't live here but own properties here and want, maybe want to be able to sell their property for top dollar. You have some people that are invested here that own multiple properties, aren't even on the committee, that just want to keep their things similar to the way they were, and they keep their stuff nice. You know what I mean? And you can't fault the F Moore family, whoever owns that building now, because it's their property and they want to get the most out of it. And I'm not saying, oh, this is all back, back, back-room deals, shaking hands and stuff like that, but there's a lot you have to figure out. And it affects the people here. It affects you on your, the 100 block of East 10th, West 10th, the 100 block, the 200 block of West 7th, because people were always dipping down everywhere to get a shortcut. You know, I was doing, doing my due diligence once, I guess it was about 10 years ago, driving home from work, and actually Tim Gunning was behind me. And I was crossing over right when Lenny still had the deli, and I was at the light. My light turns green, I go, and all of a sudden, I, something tells me to stop. Somebody slings out around the car, runs across, runs in my bumper. You know what I mean? If I didn't stop, that car would have plowed into me. I would, at minimum, had an airbag go off. You know what I mean? And this is what people don't do. They don't want to slow down. They don't want to take their time. And if you increase that to the traffic volumes that can happen and the risk of something happening with a flood or this and that, you're putting everybody at risk, not just the people driving through, not just your commuters, not just your pedestrians, your regular homeowners, your first responders. There's a lot to look into, to where like, maybe we need to think about like, what about more what-ifs? And I'm a person who's all about keeping Conche Hocken what you can, because we've lost a lot of Conche Hocken. And most of the people that are invested in Conche Hocken, they're out the door. You know what I mean? A lot of the guys, I, I haven't heard any pulver go up in this town in a long time. I haven't heard O'Neal go up and around in a whole time. And where's Brandy Wine at? You know what I mean? I haven't heard that name around in a whole time, you know? It's just one of those things. Are they just gonna like stop, stop their feet on the, on the welcome mat, make their money and run? You know, and meanwhile, our infrastructure pays the price for it, you know, which means our taxpayers do. And also too, big buildings like that, what about sewer taps? How, how far ahead is the, the sewer authority in for doing something like that? You're talking about 26 units or something like that? You know, or a grocery store that's gonna have a lot of drains in it, you know?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to clarify, what you're asking, counting to consider after this hearing is just the infrastructure, the first responders, that type of?
There's just a lot of stuff. It's everybody. It's a whole, the whole community issue.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I captured for the notes.
Yeah, it's, it's everything in whole. The infrastructure, first responders, you know, there's a lot to it. It's not just, okay, we're gonna get, you know, build a building up here eventually. We're gonna be able to build a building up here eventually and maybe go through some variances and get a couple lawyers here involved in there to circumvent this and circumvent that. There's a lot going on. You know what I mean? And it's just, it's a lot, and it's gonna be a big change. And we don't have much left of the original Conche Hocken that I grew up into when it started 44 years ago, on 5th Avenue, on the house my grandfather built, you know? Now I'm five blocks away. So, you know.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment tonight? Come on up.
Hi, Jean Thompson, 344 East 10th Avenue. I only have one, one question, I guess. And I'm, I'm not, there are two houses that have just been built on Fayette Street. I'm not sure if they're above 12th Avenue. I can't remember because-
I think they're Plymouth town.
As I go by, I go, "Oh, my God, they don't belong here. What are they? Are they in Conche Hocken or they're in Whitmarsh?"
They're in Plymouth.
They're in Plymouth?
They're in Plymouth.
Okay. So my question is, if that is anything like what you're going to allow happen, which I think goes back to Mary Ann's point, is that there should be a lot more in the code of whatever you're putting down here for what it should look like?
Well, per the ordinance that it's written-
I'm sorry?
The way the overlay ordinance is written, that would not be permitted, what they've put in Plymouth Township on Fayette Street.
So there is something permitted, there is something in that overlay that says what you're allowed, what it's allowed to look like?
Those two houses are strictly residential on Fayette in Plymouth, and that is not permitted in this overlay.
So, so what is permitted then, I guess is my question. What's it like?
Mixed use.
Oh, I see. So it could be that style. It could just, it has to be mixed use, not single-family. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
It wouldn't be, it can't be single-family.
Right.
Just the overlay, if we're talking about just the overlay, it has to be mixed use. And then there's specific architectural, dimensional requirements that would come in through a land development process, that we would make sure meet the regulations of the overlay. So I know what you're saying, that those two structures, they stick out, and all of this overlay is to make sure it blends in.
Well, that, that's my concern, and I, does, things move on, that they don't go back, they move on. And I understand that, but I think there's an opportunity, I hope, anyway, that there's an opportunity to be more specific about what it can look like, or not look like.
If I'm understanding the process, that doesn't actually go into an overlay ordinance, that goes in through land development?
You will, you will consider it during land development. So the ordinance requires things like gables, dormers, cornices, other architectural treatments that add detail, and then when council has it before during land development, you decide, and the public will have input, as to whether or not the design is appropriate and meets the requirements of the overlay.
And those land development hearings will be advertised, so the public can be engaged in what, and receive the plans, and...
So, so I think those houses are alter, are they're pretty modern, if I...
Oh, they're more than modern, they're just blocks.
Yeah, so, so, so those would, that style does not fit this ordinance.
Okay, that, that, that's my only question, at this point. Everything else has been sort of addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Come on up.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to clarify this on the previous coverage. I have two buildings in the upper avenues, and they both are almost a hundred percent covered presently. So if somebody wanted to redevelop that, you would actually enhance the drainage, as opposed to what's presently there. Eight fifteen, totally paved, but I bought it forty years ago. Nine twenty-two, just about all, all paved again. Again, that would actually, if somebody wanted to come in, it would help with drainage, not hurt with drainage.
I guess I think that goes to Alan's point of that.
Brian McGrann, again. I had one point I wanted to share on the appearances. So on the committee, one of the things we were kind of like modeling off of was what they've done over the Villanova campus, or if you've drove, driven down Lancaster Avenue, where it's like, "Oh, look at these beautiful new dorms, but they look like they've been here for a hundred years." So that's kind of what we've done, and there's, I know there's language, I can't quote it specifically, around, you know, a certain amount of stone and brick on the fronts, you know, not having solid walls, having things that are architecturally interesting. So that was kind of the intention of what we said, you know, if we had new development on Fayette Street, what do we want it to look like? That's kind of the, you know, the vibe that we were going for, of that modern but historical character, so.
Joe Schatz, ten sixteen Fayette, S-C-H-A-T-Z. Just one thing, I was playing with Google Maps as we were going here, and Forest, ten hundred block of Forest right now, is approximately six hundred of, feet of parking space, and approximately two hundred seventy-five feet are available for on-street parking. So if even two of the properties on Fayette there, that, that, that don't have garages, that right now have on-street parking available, even two of them converted and, and, went with some of the additional things available to overlay, the, the new parking's going to be available, it's going to be available to those properties for their use. It's not fixing what, what is going to absolutely lead to a trickle-down to the, to that whole section there. And I can't imagine the ten hundred block of Forest is unique, so just hoping that that is specifically looked at, block by block.
I have another question, if I may. Mary Tieran, ten sixteen Harry Street, T-I-E-R-N-A-N. Thank you. I know that for Zone Three, the proposal does not allow bars or taverns, but it does allow restaurants excluding drive-thru. Are those restaurants with liquor licenses, or is it proposed BYOB, or?
I can, I can, I can answer that. So Borough Council is restricted by the state in making that determination. So if, if a restaurant came in, and the PLCB gave it a liquor license, it could have a liquor license. There's, you can't regulate whether or not a restaurant has a liquor license.
So it's not like, I think Philadelphia has some limits that you can't get a liquor license unless they already have one there, but we wouldn't have any proposals like that?
Well, no, so there are still restrictions in terms of the market for liquor licenses, you know what I mean? But in this area, it seems as though folks are able to get liquor licenses. So if it's a restaurant that's able to get a liquor license, it would be permitted in that area.
And that's another concern.
It can operate past, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be closed by ten. We talked about that a lot.
People can do a lot of drinking before ten o'clock, and that could be a big draw, and that could, you know, and, and all of the attendant issues that we have with that kind of use, the noise, a lot of these go for property values. Again, you know, I, I understand, I'm not anti-development, I admit my concern because I don't want it in my backyard. I don't think I'm the only one on that. I mean, it, it's, it can be a huge change. What, what this has been previously was residential office use, and this has proposed a big, big change. We talk about parking in Ambler, some of that is like the SEPTA parking that is up there, some of that's parking that if you do that overlay here, it would necessitate probably buying properties on Forest or Harry to make them parking. I mean, you're, you're not just changing the overlay, you're making it go out, as others have talked about. And again, with the concern with historic, I, I just don't understand, I appreciate the discussion about it, and the goal or the hope to preserve the historical nature. I don't know how you reconcile that with the language in Section Four. Any and all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the terms, conditions, and provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, excepted specifically amended by the terms of this ordinance. The borough's zoning ordinance and zoning map are otherwise ratified and confirmed. So I, I don't understand what this means for the prior historical, the way I read this...
Nah, I can, I can explain it.
Okay.
You're talking about the historic resource overlay for single-family homes, there's no conflict. So that provision applies if, if, for example, I don't know, a gym use wasn't allowed in this area.
Uh-huh.
Under the overlay, it is allowed, right? But for something like the historic resource overlay, you could still apply that, you just need to get a conditional use. So you get a conditional use, and then you would come under this overlay to apply. So there's not, there's no conflict, that's a, it's a term of art when you're applying ordinances. You could apply both of them together, with no conflict.
I don't, I, I, I respect you know much more about this, I never did zoning law.
I, I, I promise you, if any lawyer came in to try to argue that, they would not be very well received by us or the court, because that is not what that means.
Okay.
Now, now that being said, as I, I sort of noted earlier, we can do things in the codification to make that clear, that that section still applies.
I, I think that, at the very least, that needs to be done, because going to Mary Ann Cook's point, you know, if it's vague, that's a way for any developer wanting to expand.
Yeah, so that, that provision doesn't even get codified into the ordinance, that's, that's a provision to allow us to adopt it through that document.
Okay.
When it's actually codified, you don't even see that, that's not even in there. So it's not, it's not really an ambiguity, but I think your point's well made, and we can do something to clarify that that section absolutely still applies. There's, there's no problem with that.
Okay. And then the, the subsequent discussion, I just saw in MoreThan The Curve dot com, that the Caldwell Banking property has been sold.
That's in White Marsh Township.
I, I recognize that's in White Marsh Township, but it's, you know, a few feet away from our township, which is also one of the over, the underlying issues, I think, that we have going on here. A lot of the traffic, I think, a lot of the burden on our infrastructure that people have talked about, is because of White Marsh and Plymouth allowing so much development, where they get the tax revenue, and we have the burden on our infrastructure, on our tax, on our streets, on the bridge traffic. But that is a huge property there. I don't know what's going to be developed, I know we don't have control over that since it's White Marsh or Plymouth, but looking at that, can that be taken into account on this ordinance? Because, you know, that, that just, that just changes, well, why can't it? Because we can take into account what they're doing. If we're looking at making our town more walkable, or looking at our current uses and what we want, that is going to have a big impact. It's, it may not be our town, but it's, it's just a, you know, a few steps, it's not even a block, you know, it's, it's, it's a few feet, I don't even know if it's two hundred feet from what was the Moore property. That is going to have an impact, so that's an additional concern. I don't know that that was up for sale or proposed when these were under discussion. So I think that that makes what could happen for Zone Three more problematic potentially. And I think this is another reason that there should be at least another meeting or hearing, because that might change how people viewed these proposals, when they didn't know that that was a possibility of another big, big development there, whether it's retail, whether it is apartments there, condos, it doesn't seem that they have some of the same restrictions that we aspire to have here. It seems that they approve things much more freely, and we have that to our detriment. Thank you.
Did you want to go?
Me?
Yeah. Okay. All right, come on up.
I just have one question. Dave Brown, ten thirteen Fayette Street. Does accessory usage to retail, does that include gas stations?
No, we did not put gas stations in...
Except accessory usage, you can put anything in there under accessory use.
Judy, can I just spell that out?
No, accessory use is a, is a word of art, so no.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you can stick anything in.
No, no, you can't, and no, the answer is no, a gas station is not an accessory use to retail.
Is it banned, gas stations? Like, why do you want to put a gas station?
We're, in the table, we were very specific at what could go in.
It says retail, gas is retail. They all sell it at cost.
No, you have a separate use for gas stations. So the gas station would not be retail, you have it as a separate use in your ordinance.
In other words, that's banned under the ordinance?
It would not be permitted in the ordinance.
But I didn't know what accessory uses can mean anything.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments from the public? Okay, hearing no further public comment.
So, President Sikolowski, I'll now close the hearing. I'll note, for the record, that Borough Council will consider taking a vote on this ordinance at its next meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM, here in this room at Borough Hall, four hundred Fayette Street, Conshohocken, PA. And we thank our court reporter for his time and patience this evening.
I'd just like a minute to thank everyone who came out tonight for sharing your feedback. These are the types of things that we need to make decisions, and we need it ongoing from the public, whether you're doing it one-on-one with your council members, which many people have done throughout this process, or if you come to public meetings. We've heard loud and clear that the residents do have opinions and voices, and quite honestly, we need the help kind of dissecting this kind of stuff. You know, there's seven of us, and we try to take different sections and come up with all different scenarios, but having the, the depth and breadth of the community to be able to point out things that we may or may not have thought of or heard, is helpful when we are trying to make determinations on our next step. So thank you to all that came out, it was a long hearing, but I think it was worthwhile, and thank you for everyone's feedback tonight.
Thank you.
Do we need a break, or do we want to keep? Okay, can we take a five? Okay. Okay, great. Okay, great. I'm going to ask everyone to take their seats so we can continue the meeting. Okay, so we are at our manager matters section of our agenda. At this time, I'm going to turn over to Stephanie to go through several items that we'll need some motions on.
Thank you, Council President Sikolowski. As you stated, every item under manager matters is up for consideration this evening. So if you're so inclined, there will be a motion requested. The first item is to request a supplemental appropriation for the buyout of Keystone 402 Fayette, their lease interests in the Borough Hall property. This was previously approved in 2023. The closing did not happen, so we are requesting that the same supplemental appropriation, which is $1,525,000 plus associated closing costs, be approved as a supplemental appropriation in the 2024 budget. And that would be going from Capital Reserve Fund to the Keystone Fayette LLC. Just make one note that we did receive the $1.4 million from the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority last week, so that money will come in and the $1.5 will go out. And your return on investment is roughly 90 days based off the evaluation of the leases. So if inclined, I would ask for a motion.
Any questions from council related to the supplemental appropriation? Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve Resolution 24, 2024-02 for supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2024 budget in the amount of $1,525,000 plus associated closing costs to buy out the Keystone 402 Fayette LLC lease interests?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Over the course of fiscal year 2023, we worked in conjunction with our labor attorney to revise the non-union and fire personnel manual to meet all of current labor standards regarding all of our policies and procedures. That process is now complete. The final version was included in your meeting uploads for your review. If so inclined, this process is now closed and is up for consideration this evening.
Any questions related to the non-uniform fire personnel manual?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the revision to the borough's non-uniform and fire personnel manual?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
We are hosting our, the mayor's committee is hosting the annual arts festival. The request is for June 1st with a rein date of June 8th, and this is contingent upon final administrative and emergency services review for our special event guidelines.
So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2024 Mayor's Art Festival and Car Show on June 1st, 2024, with the rein date being June 8th, 2024, contingent upon the final administrative and emergency services review.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The 2022 CDBG curb ramp project is complete. We have the maintenance bonds on file, therefore, payment certificate number two, which is the final payment, is ready for processing in the amount of $8,124.74.
Any questions on curb ramp projects? Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve the payment certificate number two, final, for the 2022 CDGB curb ramp project in the amount of $8,124.74?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And the Fayette Street pedestrian crossing project is complete, so payment application number four for Lanai Electric Corp. is ready to be processed. As a reminder, this project was paid for through a PennDOT ARLE grant in the amount of $348,000.
Any questions about the application and payment? Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve payment application number four for the Lanai Electric Corporation for the Fayette Street pedestrian crossing project in the amount of $15,209.10?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
There is a request for Sergeant Michael Connor to complete a three-class GIS systems operations certificate program at Montgomery County Community College, beginning in the fall of 2024. The request has gone through Acting Chief Lennon. It meets the requirements per the CBA stipulations, therefore, it's in front of view this evening for consideration.
Any questions on the class?
Global Information System?
Geographic Geospatial Information System.
It's in mode.
Right? All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve Sergeant Connor's request to register for the three-class GIS system operations certificate from Montgomery County Community College, beginning in the fall of 2024, in the amount of $1,881?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up on the agenda are some legal matters, and with that, I will ask Mike Peters to take us through that list.
Thank you. I'm President Sikolowski. So the first item is to consider approving a RACP cooperation agreement and sub-grantee agreement between the RDA and Concord Keystone. Borough Council is familiar with RACP grants. For those folks that are new to Borough Council, they're redevelopment assistance capital program grants, and the way the money flows, it comes from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania down to the RDA and then down to Keystone. Keystone does not have taxing ability, and the Commonwealth requires someone with taxing ability to almost be like a guarantor on the RACP grants. That's where we come in as the Borough Contra Hocken under the cooperation agreement. And because we end up being on the hook, although across the RACP program, it's never happened at a municipality that had to pay, we then do, which is item B, a reimbursement agreement between the Borough of Contra Hocken and Concord that if we did ever have to pay out any money, or if we expend money in facilitating the grant, Concord Keystone Sora West Owner LLC has to pay the borough. So the first item, President Sikolowski, is the cooperation agreement, sub-grantee agreement, and the reimbursement agreement will be a second.
Any questions on what Mike presented?
It's a $1 million grant. I don't know if I said that.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
You made the comment that, which answered my first question, no one's ever defaulted.
Never.
Has there ever been a time that we've had to recover costs at all?
No. And I say that partially because at the same time that we have a RACP grant going on, usually we have a land development going on at the same time. So there is a possibility that in this specific circumstance, we may need to recover costs, and we'll be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve the RACP cooperation agreement and RACP sub-agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County, the Borough of Contra Hocken, and Concord Keystone Sora West Owner LLC, subject to final review by the borough manager and borough solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The second motion is to consider approving the reimbursement agreement between the Borough of Contra Hocken and Concord Keystone Sora West, subject to final review by the borough manager and borough solicitor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is discussion on the revision to the fire ordinance to include the addition of fire captain. This is a request from your fire department and fire chief, and the ordinance would establish the following chain of command, and all it does is add in fire captain, so that's really the only change. It would go chief, deputy chief, assistant fire chief, battalion chief, fire cap in the new position, safety officers. And I do believe this evening, it's only here for a discussion. Is that correct, Steph?
And then on your next meeting in February, it would be authorized for advertisement if so inclined, and then it would be adopted in March.
Does anyone have any questions? I have one question. So the fire department brought this to us to consider, and did they give any specific reasons why they want a level of captain in their organization chart?
The fire department is growing and expanding, as are all of our departments, and Borough Council has asked those departments, specifically the department heads, to do an evaluation of departmental needs as it comes to organization and management. And therefore, we think this is the next step in terms of growing the department in the direction that we need it to go to meet the future needs of the borough as it also continues to grow. And the fire captain fits into not only the needs from the volunteer side, but also the, I'll say, assets that we have at our disposal from the full-time firefighters that we have on our staff.
So is this a full-time position, or is this a voluntary?
No, this is just a, it's not an additional full-time position. It's just an actual.
Title.
Title within the overall fire department hierarchy.
Okay.
So it will be assigned to a current employee.
Okay. They get reimbursed for that, like, a payment for that position?
You reserve the ability in the ordinance to set a separate compensation for it?
That was my question. Yeah, I saw that.
Steph may know, but I did not know if one is being proposed, but you have the ability should one be proposed.
Can I ask who in that line does receive compensation? The fire chief, obviously.
The fire chief and the deputy fire chief, that's part of their salary, so there's no more stipends. So this fire captain is also a salaried employee, so it will be part of.
That was my, okay.
Moving forward that will be proposed in your budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay.
All right, moving on. Next item, discussion on a memorandum of understanding between SEPTA and the Borough of Contra Hocken regarding tax parcel 05-00-00040-00-9. This is an MOU setting forth an understanding between the borough and SEPTA regarding the property that they bought down adjacent to the Mattson Mill project. SEPTA is investigating a transit-oriented development for that area. This MOU does not obligate the borough to approve or give any special consideration to that TOD. What it does allow for is for SEPTA to go through that process. If they need zoning relief, they'll have to go to the zoning hearing board. But on the flip side, what the borough has worked through with SEPTA is getting surface parking in a more immediate term, and that would be 125 temporary parking spaces. The time they put on finishing it, it actually changed slightly today from eight months to 260 working days, which I think is probably more realistic. And that's from the date that they issue a notice to proceed to the contractor. And then if at the end of all of this, the TOD does not work out, what this MOU provides is that SEPTA would then move forward with their parking garage project. So it's an attempt between the two organizations to set some expectations moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mike, what happens if we don't, we don't sign it?
If you don't sign the MOU?
Yeah, we just talked.
Well, what would hap, oh, I don't want to, I don't want to speak ill of SEPTA. So they may still come through with the commitments they've made in here, even if you don't do that, but you would have no ability from a contractual standpoint to, for example, push the issue of surface parking, or at the end, to push the issue of the parking garage. So you would be left with an amorphous good faith between two politic bodies versus an MOU that actually has some ability to enforce.
So what you're saying in today's current state of SEPTA owning that property, they are looking for other options to develop, probably because the cost of building a parking garage at this time is counterproductive to their business operations.
I'm sure that's correct, Tina, yes.
If they, if we don't explore, if they don't explore other options, they are still required to build a parking garage as we have agreed upon, but there is no timeline on when we agreed upon that parking garage.
There's no timeline, and frankly, there's no, there's no actual contract. There's, so they have the approvals to build it, but there's nothing formal that you could enforce. This changes that.
So that lot could stay just as is, with no even surface parking?
Absolutely.
At this point?
Yes, that's correct.
To solve for the SEPTA parking that we're seeing today?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. So this is a way to at least guarantee some additional parking in the immediate term, and then set real legitimate expectations moving forward.
Could you go through the specific terms of the agreement, the list of terms? I know there's, for them and for us.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, I sure can. So first, it sets forth responsibilities as between SEPTA and the borough. First, that SEPTA will construct interim surface parking of approximately 125 spaces. Again, there's a change there, Alan, which I noted. It's 260 working days after SEPTA receives all necessary approved permits. They actually changed it to 260 days after they issued a notice to proceed, but that's what we would have counted it from anyway. That SEPTA would, quote, "prepare the elements of an RFP and publish any necessary solicitations for the TOD project," and that SEPTA will apply for all permits, variances, amendments, or overlays required by the Borough of Contra Hocken Code of Ordinances, including specifically the zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development ordinance, subject to the provisions of Section 2B2, and I'll explain that in a moment. So what that requires is SEPTA to either comply with the borough's ordinances or seek a variance, just like they could today. The next section is what we will do. We'll use reasonable efforts to coordinate with SEPTA the elements of the RFP, and that gives us the ability to actually see the RFP before it goes out. We're not involved in the RFP process, but at least we have a sense of what's going on. And then the second piece is with SEPTA, we always, in how they pay us for the work that we do, we pay them for actual costs rather than requiring a large deposit like we do from normal developers. Their public money, we're public money, they pay us as actual costs come in. So that's that 2B2 that I referenced previously. SEPTA will coordinate with us if the TOD moves forward on the TOD project and the interim lot. Those will include participating in one or meeting, one or more meetings with SEPTA planning and engineering teams. In the event the TOD project is not approved by the appropriate body or bodies and contingent upon all current funding sources, SEPTA will move forward with the existing station upgrade. And then, Alan, it contains a project schedule, setting forth what they anticipate. That's for the TOD project, not for the surface parking project. And I think the concluding date on what was sent today is like 2026 would be the concluding date for the TOD project. It has notice provisions, which just identify who it needs to go to, Steph and me and the folks at SEPTA. It has confidentiality provisions, to the extent there is confidential information shared back and forth. And then it has all the miscellaneous provisions, Alan, that you would expect in a, in a contract.
Thank you.
Is it a, is it a correct statement to say that this agreement between the Borough of Conshohocken and SEPTA for this property does not agree, or does not contain us saying that they are allowed to go forth?
That is 100% accurate, yes.
I just want to make sure. Also, do we have an idea of what our expected costs, since we do have some, we do have some of our own terms on here, things we have to do for them? Do we have any idea of what kind of costs that would incur for us?
Oh, it, it, it should be, well, there's, there's two aspects to it. One, it should be minor, but then, two, they have to pay us for those costs.
Right.
So, so it should be a net, a net zero.
Okay. Okay, so we don't expect to incur any additional costs by going into this agreement. We're, in layman's terms, for me, and again, please correct me, we're, this agreement is us allowing them to just explore, and in turn, they're giving us at least a parking lot?
That's correct, and I think, I think it was a result of the amount of pressure as between the two organizations when the parking lot, or the parking garage didn't move forward immediately. So this was a, a good faith effort to say, okay, we're all still, we're still friends, and here are the terms of what's going to happen moving forward.
Let me just make sure that's, yeah, okay, well, that covers everything for me, thanks.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they, they're obviously going to come back with some sort of housing in that area. I mean, that's all the bidding that they've had so far. So then it's up to the zoning hearing board to give them a variance or not. So the question is, what happens if they do? And then again, what happens if they don't?
So if they do, it would come to you for land development. If they don't, under this agreement, they move forward with the parking garage.
So all the pressures on the zoning hearing board, who gave them everything they wanted two years ago already?
Well, that, well, that was, so that was a little different. That was, that was-
I mean, as far as what they wanted at the time.
Yeah, that wasn't a use, there's a big difference between a use variance, and that was a floodplain variance, so there's two, as you know, I mean, you, you know as well, it's different standards, but, but you're correct, they got the floodplain relief last time.
Any other questions? Okay, there's no vote needed on this today.
This is for discussion this evening. It'll be at your voting meeting for consideration.
And then the last item I have is discussion of an intergovernmental agreement and form bill of sale for the stormwater collection and management system between the Borough and the Borough of Conshohocken Authority. So as council is aware, and I know even the, the new members are aware, in April of 2022, the Borough and the sewer authority entered into a memorandum of understanding, similar to what we just discussed, and under that M O U, that followed an investigation by the Borough as to whether or not the authority would be sold. It was ultimately determined that it would not be, and the authority and the Borough at that time entered into an M O U, setting forth what would happen moving forward, because there was significant infrastructure needs on the part of the Borough. That M O U provided that the Borough would transfer the storm sewer system to the authority, that the authority would do certain work in terms of investigating how to pay for it. This intergovernmental agreement is the back end of that. It's the formalities and the structure in which we would achieve it. The easy document, although easy for me, but not necessarily easy for the engineers, they have to set forth the assets that go into the storm sewer system, is the bill of sale, which basically says, you take our storm sewer system and its assets, and there's a kickback provision that if anything ever goes wrong, it comes back to the Borough, which I also set forth in the intergovernmental agreement as well. And then if you read through the I G A, it sets forth how we envision that actually working. So you have transfer of the system to the authority, and then the Borough and the authority, the best way to go about doing it is to put both of them on your M S four permit, which you guys understand is your municipal separate storm sewer permit. You would become co-permittees from D E P standpoint, and therefore have joint liability, joint responsibility under the M S four permit. But the way I set up the intergovernmental agreement, if that relationship falls apart, if it turns out that the authority can no longer function or pay for the system, the M S four permit reverts back to the Borough, which makes sense from the authority standpoint anyway, because frankly, if something goes way wrong, honestly, we can dissolve the authority, not that we're playing on doing that, but that's why it makes sense for the M S four permit to come back to the Borough. The Borough then, under this agreement, although the authority takes over ownership responsibility, including financial ownership responsibility, the Borough actually becomes a contractor for the authority, so the Borough is still going to do the physical work, to the extent it can, and doesn't need to contract it out, which it's also permitted to do under this agreement, to maintain the storm sewer system, with the authority funding all of that work, so that it comes out, that the costs don't come out of the Borough's tax base, it comes out of a, a different fee over with the authority. There's requirements in here that, that the Borough and the authority agree on a capital improvement plan, a 10-year plan, for how the storm sewer system is going to be improved and updated. You heard tonight, comments about the aging infrastructure and the needs to update that infrastructure, including the storm sewer infrastructure. So this contemplates a 10-year capital plan that both the Borough and the authority would agree on. The authority then has ultimate responsibility for executing that capital improvement plan, but as I just stated, the Borough actually will be doing the work, so it's more of a financial obligation on the authority. The last piece of it, and then we can get into more details if you want, is what happens with land developments as they come in. So land developments, when they come in, all of the storm water work that's going to occur on the property is the Borough's responsibility. We have the ordinances that require certain types of stormwater management based on the amount of impervious coverage going onto a property. We would still do all of that, and if, if an entity is doing its own stormwater basin, that's still us too. That's all on property. It has nothing to do with the authority. If the, if it's being connected into the authority system, what the agreement contemplates, because again, we're still a co-permitee on the M S four permit, is that we'll review it for purposes of all the Borough's ordinances, and then the authority only reviews it for purposes of their rules, rates, and regulations that they'll adopt regarding the storm sewer system. So in those instances where you're actually connecting into the authority storm sewer system, we're just going to have to collaborate on the review. But again, it's two separate topics that we're looking at, so there shouldn't be any major overlap. Those are the primary provisions of the intergovernmental agreement. There's a lot to making all of that happen. I should say that in addition to the normal provisions for getting out from under an agreement like this, like a breach, or, or, for example, the inability of the authority to pay for the storm sewer system, I also put in here an absolute right of the Borough to get out by providing one year's notice. Again, the concept being that if something really went that wrong, we could dissolve the sewer authority, so the one-month notice is just a, an easier way to go about doing it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's, it's, it's 11 single-spaced pages of legalese, so anything I can answer for you, I will, I will do so.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Can you talk about who, through this agreement, who controls setting the fees for the-
I can. So, so under the agreement, under the agreement and under the April 22 M O U that I referenced to you, the authority is responsible for setting the fees. So, and that's because it becomes an asset of the authority. So it wouldn't be appropriate for the Borough to set a fee, or for the Borough to use tax dollars to pay for work associated with the storm sewer system. So the fee is a authority fee that although we may have some political ability to review, is, is really their, it's their fee.
We have input on their capital plan.
Exactly. We have input on their capital plan, and we also, in addition to that capital plan, we also have input, as a practical matter, on the year-to-year expenses, because we're actually doing the work. So, so if something comes up that, that costs are going through the roof, I put in the agreement that there's always an ability for the parties to meet in good faith and reexamine that capital plan, to make sure that the, the Borough on its side isn't inequitably carrying costs, because we'll be paying our employees and our equipment, and then on the other side, to make sure that the fee doesn't become oppressive for anyone.
That's it for me.
So the way that this was set up with the sewer authority subcontracting the Borough is a step to allow the authority to basically learn stormwater management, and then begin to build an infrastructure at the authority as a utility in stormwater management.
Absolutely. And, and you know, because, because the, the authority is a utility holder, the Borough is, you don't have water, you know, you don't have your own public water system, and you don't have your own public sewer system. So your only real utility asset is the storm sewer system. So you're exactly right. It allows them to set up a storm sewer system utility in a way that hopefully won't be terribly difficult for them, because it's pipes in the ground, it carries different stuff, but I, I think they'll do a nice job with it.
Anyone have any other questions? Okay.
And that's, that's up for a vote at your voting session as well.
All right, that concludes all of the sections of our agenda. With that, I will ask for council and mayor matters. So, Mr. Mayor, what, what do you have first today?
Thank you, President Sokolowski. So first off, we have a continuing series from the Masons at the Fritz Lodge, Tuesday, February 20th, at 6:15. It's free to anyone. They've had, over the last few years, quite a few historical figures in, and it's always a really, really fun time, educational, the scouts are always there, so I, I do recommend residents come and join the fun. Thomas will certainly be there, depending on what mom says about bedtime. We also, this month is National Heart Month, and Thomas was chosen as an ambassador to CHOP for one of their fundraisers coming up in March, and we are just asking in general the public to, to wear red as, to honor some of the heart babies and heart patients out there. So, so that's for the month of February. We also had, every January, Conchi Elementary does the Kindness Challenge, and it just seems to get bigger and more fun every year. Community members, residents, parents, students, I was hanging out with, with chief and our officers, and it's just great that, that we can have some face time with, with students in such a positive environment, and supporting a message of kindness. So, so that was last month, and we had, thank you, as always, to Conchi Elementary for inviting us. And then finally, as Thomas continues his tour through the Borough, we had our first haircut at Tough Nickel, and of course, Karen had to, had to have, have at it. So, so thank you to Karen for taking such good care of Thomas for his haircut. He, he actually looks like a, like a little boy, which is heartbreaking, but, but it was awesome, and as always, thank you to all of our Conchi businesses for being so welcoming to Thomas's first time in their stores. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ralph? Stacy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Kathleen?
Nothing, thank you.
Nita?
Yep. Work began on the annual renewal of the special dedicated parking spaces. Renewal letters and certifications were sent to the program participants, except those whose spaces that were installed in November and December of 2023. Your certifications to renew your spaces are to be returned by March 16th. Thank you.
Thanks. Adrian?
All right, I just have a couple things. Upcoming meetings, we have zoning hearing board meetings, 2/12, February 12th, 2024, and that is related to 333 West Seventh Avenue. On 2/26, 2020-
Just to note for February 12th, that hearing is actually going to be open and continued on the record, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. February 26th, zoning hearing board meeting. The topics will be 110 Washington Lane, 720 to 730 Fayette Street, 5 Caldwell Lane, and 422 West Sixth Avenue. We have the Civil Service Commission meeting on 213. That is a reorganization and preparing for the patrol officer testing through the Montgomery County Consortium. And then Planning Commission actually has a meeting tomorrow evening related to 401 433 Washington Street and updates. So I encourage anyone who has interest in any of those projects to either join the meeting or watch the videos of the meetings. And with that, I will say, meeting adjourned. Public comment. Ah, we did public comment all through the meeting, so that I was, any public comment? All right. With that, I will say, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.